Are we on? Good evening, everybody. With it being 6:30 on Thursday, March 15, 2018, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I appreciate everybody's flexibility with the unfortunate slight storm that we had the other day, having to reschedule our meeting from Tuesday night to this evening. Moving on, or starting with the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the February 27, 2018 minutes. I will entertain a motion as such.
Still moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Gogan. How are you? You're all wired up.
I'm very good. Thank you for asking. I hope everyone can hear me. I do have enormous information to share with you tonight. I was hoping that our cheerleaders could make it tonight to let them come and talk to you, but it doesn't look like they're here. Our cheerleaders from Bartlett High School...
Excuse me one minute. You gotta leave that door open. Sorry.
...are competed again, and they're fourth in the state. And I wanted to congratulate them. As you know, they were 12th in the nation when they went to Disney World, so they're on a roll.
Wow.
And if they do show up, we'll congratulate them in person. I wanted to let you know that. I also wanted to give an update to the school committee on some of the happenings of what's been going on. I just passed out In Webster Kindness Matters bracelets to all of you. We have a new initiative. It's actually not a new initiative, but we're focusing on spreading random acts of kindness and actually teaching our kids and our staff to speak up when they see something. This week was National Walkout Day. The high school made the news. Channel 3 was here. Our students put together a peaceful vigil, and I'm quite pleased that how that turned out. If you haven't been able to see the news, please check out my Twitter feed where you will find it, and I will send that information out to parents. At the middle school, the middle school students worked in advisory on coming up with ways to brainstorm how to make the world and the schools a safer place. They did have some students walk out of their classrooms, but due to the snow, they stayed in the hallway, and everyone was very respectful. I want to stress that these walkouts in our district were not political. They were really based on kids using their voices and paying their respects to those who lost their lives. Certainly at the elementary school, the focus was on random acts of kindness and developmentally left at that. So I was happy to, I was happy with the way things went, and I wanted to let you know that. I'm also, would like to let you know that it is a big weekend. We have the Central Mass Junior Show Choir Festival going on at the Bartlett High School, and I want to invite all parents and families and community members who may be watching to get your tickets now. The show choirs at both of the schools are totally amazing, and we want to encourage families to come out and support our kids in that way. The Central Mass Junior Show is at Bartlett High School. The show starts at 5:00, and tickets can be purchased at the door or online. And if you follow my Twitter, you will see where that link is, and it's also on our webpage. I wanted to tell you a little bit about how busy the school is. As you can probably see how tired I am, our kids are doing amazing things, and I think it's important for the school community, the larger community, to know that. I had the luxury of being asked to be a DECA judge this past weekend in Boston. I had really no idea what DECA was. I'm very proud of the kids that are coming out of Bartlett and competing. This DECA competition had over 3,000 students, high school students, going to present their ideas. They were given a task, and they had to come up with a solution in 10 minutes and sell it, almost like a business proposal. And we just found out that Connor Brennan and Dylan Thomas placed third in their category and are eligible to go to the national competition in Atlanta in April. And I, in spending time with the kids and Mrs. Honig, I found out that she's been doing this club for 18 years, and I wanted to give a shout-out to her. It was, it was like going to a workshop with 3,000 kids, where they were all in their suits and their dresses, and they were very professional, and they got to go to different workshops. And I was so impressed with the level of maturity and professionalism, not just from our kids, but all of the kids that are involved in DECA. So I wanted to let you know that. I also wanted to let you know that the middle school show choir, the New Attitude, had a competition in Connecticut last weekend as well, and they came in second place, and they received the award for best vocals. And Lucas Wolfram was awarded the best performer. So it seems like every day we're getting news about how great kids are doing in our school system, and I, I want the community to hear that. I'm so very proud of them, and I know that their parents are, and their teachers are, and their advisors are as well. I think I've covered those things, and now I would like to speak to you a little bit about my entry plan. So as your new superintendent, my, my task as your leader of this district is to really move the district forward. And anytime you come into a district, you need to listen and learn, and I've been spending the last eight months getting to know the district, and so you have a very comprehensive report in front of you. It's well over 30-something pages. So I'm going to give you a very brief update on my findings in this little presentation, and I will use the technology in front of me. So the purpose of an entry plan is to really gather information from all the stakeholders in the district and take that information and work with the people in the district to move and create a strategic plan. As you can see, there's many wonderful things that are happening, which I've just spoken about, across our district. It's important for us not to lose sight in schools that we are not just a number on a standardized test. Educating the whole child means educating the whole child, and I am so impressed with the amount of extracurricular and in-house activities that we have for our kids that enable our kids to make connections and expand their learning on, and we should all be very proud of that in this community. My entry plan goals were really quite simple: to build on existing programs, to listen, to develop future goals, to understand, to evaluate what's going on, and to learn, and to create, and then use the material. In my plan, in front of all the school committee members, this goes into much more detail. I love the pictures of the kids because that's what it's all about. I gathered information many ways across the district. I've reviewed hundreds of documents and procedures. I've met with parents and students and teachers and school committee members and community members. We've had different types of surveys go out to staff, to parents, to parents who have left the district. I've been in all of the buildings and done countless observations, and I am really working hard to attend and participate in a variety of school and community activities. There I am, in a first-grade classroom, and there the high school kids are, working on digital, making 3D digital creatures at the Janet Maisler Trust Fund, but thanks to them. And to me, that's amazing. Not a lot of schools have these kind of things going on. So here's a brief summary of my findings. There is a very strong sense of community within our schools. There are many rich and traditional, rich and meaningful traditions across our district. There is a sense of hope that exists for the future, and many people have a strong desire to change a negative perception that some people have of this district. There's a belief that exists that we can make a difference for our students by reviewing and making the necessary changes and updates to our instructional programs. And there's a strong level of support from parents who are engaged in the extracurricular activities. Awesome. So at this point, I'm going to pause.
Extracurricular activities.
Yes. I am going to pause.
Gophers to give away.
Yes. All right. So thank you so much for coming. I am going to pause my presentation and introduce to you the Bartlett High School cheering team. So if you would like to come up front and share, share with us, I'd like to have you guys explain where you're at, what you just won, and all about your adventures.
Well, I thought they, I thought they were going to do one of their routines.
No, it's not, it's not big enough.
Do you want to do a little bit? Go ahead.
So thank you so much for coming. So can you tell us a little bit about winning, how you feel about winning fourth place in the states?
Hold on one second. Let me just, there you go. Grab that, please.
Oh, right. Um...
No.
Yes.
Hello?
No, it's on.
It is?
Oh! Oh!
You guys are on TV.
Yeah, viewing audience. Millions watching.
It's almost as popular as American Idol. We're getting close.
Me too.
So getting fourth in the state was a really big accomplishment because the Central Mass team hasn't done that in quite a while, so it's really fulfilling to know that we could be as good as we've hoped, and we've worked so hard to get where we are right now, and it's a really great feeling.
Been a while since we've, like, had an accomplishment like this, because we've been getting, like, fifth and past, like, and so fourth is, like, a big step.
So you're 12th in the nation at Disney World, correct?
Yeah.
And now you're fourth in the state. Can you help explain that to us? Like, what kind of competitions?
Well, the Nationals that we went to is much more cheery. I don't know really how to explain it. It's more with the signs and the palms and everything like that, and we're yelling chants, and we're trying to get the crowd to yell back at us, whereas states is much more competitive. It's more of, you're there to do the skills you have rather than the cheering. So it's, it was kind of really hard to go from one thing to the other and then come back and have to go right back into what we used to do, but I think we did really good doing it. It's kind of a weird thing for us because we haven't done it in quite a while, but it was really fun to just know that we, even though it's something we don't normally do, we still are pretty good at it.
Nationals is also, like, much faster. States moving. So it's a lot, like, we're one of the only that does, but here, the rest of them, all here, they're doing what, does Nationals, they kind of had...
An upper hand. So basically, what they're trying to explain is, in the state of Massachusetts, it's more of, when we compete, it's more of a all-star-ish competition, where Massachusetts has completely different rules than everybody else in the state. So when we get our bid to Nationals, a lot of other schools stay away from going to the Nationals that we went to because, number one, it's one of the biggest ones in the country, and number two, we have to change our entire routine, which for, you know, a lot of these schools that went down there, they have been doing it since September, October. They go to something completely different down there. They're called qualifiers. So they get their qualifying bid in the beginning of September, end of October, where our qualifying bid did not come in to us until end of November. We got approval to go in December. We had literally less than six weeks for these girls to completely change their whole way of cheering, to go back down to the southern states that do more like a college cheer. It was very difficult, but these girls killed it. I couldn't have asked for anything more. I think our goal to go down there was just to make it to semi, and they went right past, you know, prelims, and they went to semis, and we're like, I can't believe we're actually going to finals. And when we went to finals, their, their schools are very amazing. So we actually got 12th, and we were very, very happy. I know that doesn't sound like, like, the greatest thing, but to us, it was like...
Does sound like the greatest thing.
It was amazing. And then when we came back, we had a week to go back to the Massachusetts rules, and that was even more difficult. So when we went to Swickle, we're like, oh, we're just gonna go to Swickle and hope to God that we don't fall, or, you know, we just...
We're a mess.
We're not a hot mess. We hadn't, for seven weeks, we didn't tumble. We didn't do the stunts the same way. The stunting is different. Everything's completely different. So then we went to Swickle, and we won Swickle, and we got grand champs. And then we went to regionals, and we're like, okay, guys, this is probably it, so don't get too excited. And we won regionals, and we got grand champs there, and we're like, oh, God, what is happening? So then when we went to states, we got fourth, and that was, that was good.
It was definitely something hard, especially for some of the people that tumble on the team, because we went to the UCA, and they're, we went into non-tumbling division, so the whole thing was just focused on stunt. You have to hit everything. That's what you have to do. But here, you have to have the numbers, and you have to be able to do all those amazing flips, and they're, compared to the first-place team, we, they were throwing everything they possibly could. All of them were doing stuff. So it was really hard, and we haven't tumbled since probably the pep rally in thanks, for Thanksgiving, so it was hard to come back and just be able to go and do routines that are six times harder than what we had to do at UCA.
We are so proud of you.
Thank you.
Do you have your trophy?
Yeah.
Could you get your trophy, and let me take a picture?
So we are missing five girls right now.
Work.
But they're all working, and some of them are sick, so...
That's a big trophy.
Okay, get a look at Mrs. Gogan. She'll get mad if you don't look at her.
I can't see, let me stand up. Okay, I get everybody. Awesome, girls. Really proud of you.
Oh, I moved. Sorry.
That's okay. I took a bunch. Thank you so much. Really, really.
So hold on one second. Any questions or comments from the committee? Again, just on behalf of the entire committee, we're very proud of you all. I haven't had any children that ever cheered, so I never actually saw a live performance until a couple of years ago. I attended the pep rally, and I was walking out of the gym with either Mr. L. or Mr. Nolte, and I said, "Those are the best athletes in the building."
Oh, it's...
I was shocked at the athleticism and what you guys do out there. So we're very proud of you guys. Mr. Nolte and I think might actually give him the day off tomorrow unexcused because they did so well. No, no, I'm sorry. I screwed that one up. I apologize.
I get you, buddy.
Ah, that's a good point.
You're right.
There's the football coach in him. But again, we're all very proud of you. Thank you very much. You guys are very wonderful representatives of the school and the town. So thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for coming. Have a good night.
Can you guys just turn the room speakers up a little? Or does that create feedback? Okay.
Okay, Vern. We're back on the, okay.
All right. Well, good luck, Mrs. Gogan, following up on that.
All right. That's what it's all about. It's all about kids. And so I was speaking about the strengths in the district, and there's a strong level of support from parents, particularly parents who are, whose students are engaged in extracurricular activities. So those are just a summary of some of the strengths. It's a new building. Everybody's like, which way do we go? How many doors are in this place? Here's a, a list of some of the needed focus in the district from what I can tell. You know, all of our existing programs, our academic programs, need to be reviewed for their level of effectiveness. Any organization really needs to develop a system where they're constantly looking at how well they're doing things. And we are, as a team, my administrative team, I'm very pleased to say, really making some headway in that direction, and in taking a look at data, looking at effectiveness and efficiency of how we're using our staffing. And I am working them hard. I think today, literally, we had, I don't know, at least five hours of meetings in this room. And I'm not kidding.
Why do I look so rested?
Yeah. So this is a very busy time of the year. Some of our other areas of focus, which we've talked about during the budget season, is to really look at curriculum instruction and assessments and put together a more cohesive plan for pre-K to 12. You know, we, in your extensive entry plan, you will see district and statewide assessments. Tonight, you're going to see a presentation on our district assessments, and so we're using this information as baseline. This is where we're starting from. We need to expand our teacher leadership and data teams at each of the schools. To create systems in schools, you can't do that by a top-down management style. You need to be working with your teachers. And so we are working on ways to have our department heads, our grade-level coordinators be more involved in curriculum and assessment, data analysis, and you have seen some of that in our turnaround plans, and we're working on turnaround plans at the high school and at the middle school. And you're going to see that, you're going to see a repeated pattern with all of these things that we need to work on. We do have an issue with student and staff attendance in the district. We do need to find some solution to finding certified substitute teachers, and we do need to have a, a plan for looking at why our graduation rate is so low. And then a constant theme that's come across through the, through my findings is that communication needs to be more consistent from administration and teachers to parents and guardians. So communication across the district needs to be strengthened. And that's not the blame game. That's just, the more you communicate, the more the two-way communication is going on, the more you learn about a particular student, a particular student's needs, and how things are being perceived. Sometimes we may send out a message, and it may not be perceived the way we want it to be, and if we don't have two-way communication, we can't fix that. So I am encouraging parents to get involved in the schools, to volunteer, to share their ideas on how to improve the Webster Public Schools. It's a team effort. So this is a very brief summary of a very extensive report, and the bottom line is, I believe through our core beliefs and our day-to-day actions, we can and we will make a difference for the students and in our community. And the entry plan findings before you are the beginning of a strategic plan. They're a mid-year review for myself as your superintendent. They will give you a preview, which you are hopefully well aware of, the kind of work that we're doing to build a stronger educational foundation for kids and actually make sure that other people in and outside of Webster understand the strengths of this district. And that is my short presentation.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the committee for Mrs. Gogan? Again, I just would like to, you know, reiterate some of the comments I've made to you privately. I certainly appreciate your efforts and your hard work coming into the district. I know you tried very hard, and I think you've succeeded at really trying to identify, first of all, to your point earlier, you know, every organization has issues and concerns that they need to work on, and it's critical for any leader to identify those because you can't plan to try to correct them if they're not identified. But I've been very impressed with your ability and willingness and desire to really understand us as a school district culture and as a town culture. And, and that says a lot to me about your personal commitment, obviously, to not only all the students and the staff, but to the entire community, because I believe, you know, the, one of the most important, I might argue, the most important aspect of any community are the, is the school system, because obviously, we're getting our wonderful children ready for that college and career readiness that everybody likes to throw around. I think, certainly from my perspective, and again, I've shared this with you privately, I'm not always the most patient parent in the world, because some of what you've identified, I think, has been in existence for quite some time, and that's not your fault. You weren't here, and, but I guess one question I would have is, for those parents that might be watching or attending that at times get frustrated because we may not see change as quickly as we would like, what would you say to us with regards to moving forward and entering, you know? This is literally your entry plan.
Mm-hmm. It takes time to put together new procedures, new operating procedures. One of the things that we are working, and I didn't go through the whole entry plan with you detailed, dot-by-dot, you can read that. One of the things that we're working on with my administrative team is to put more consistent and cohesive practices in place. So for example, we just revised our registration packets, which are key when people enter the district, and how we go about entering and welcoming families into the district. So you can't do that overnight. Now, now, I'm not saying that the registration packets were wrong, but if you don't have a system in place where you're constantly reviewing every couple of years what you're doing and if it's still working, and if everybody's implementing that the way it was originally intended to do, you get gaps. So for, for, for people who want instant results, they're not going to happen. I will tell you that. We are working in a humanistic environment. We are dealing with kids. Our job is to educate kids, but before educating kids, we have to, one, make sure they're safe; two, make sure they're emotionally supported; and, three, we have to have partnerships with parents to do that. And then we have to educate them. And we're working on looking at building a stronger foundation at the elementary school in terms of reading. Reading is the gateway to every, everything. And building stronger foundations in math and looking at the cohesiveness of our math program from K to 12. So we are, without getting into educational language for the larger community, we are looking at all of our programs to see if they, one, need to be improved; two, how are we going to improve them in the most cost-efficient way? What resources that we have, can we reallocate to, to beef those programs up? And it's not one pixie dust of, here it is, we got a reading program, in a year from now, our scores are going to be up here. That's not the answer. Every child's different. Every child has strengths. Every child needs to understand what their strengths are, and so we're really working on balancing the curriculum with guiding and supporting our teachers with the tools that they need to understand their kids and having those tools readily available. So you're going to see in the next year and two years that we are purchasing new material that's research-based, making sure that our teachers are provided professional development so that they understand how to use those, that material, and that we are using data that's informing our instructional practices. And we've been looking at, and you're going to hear tonight, we've been looking at what's existing in our district for internal assessments. You're going to see a presentation tonight. Are those the best assessments out there? We may be changing that. So we, as we uncover, I always call it an onion. We peel another layer, and we peel another layer. We get better and better, and that takes time. And in the process of getting better and better, it's not us doing it alone, and this is what I want the community to hear. The school should be a place where, whether you have kids or don't have kids, that you are invested in your future, and the kids are our future. And so I'm trying really hard to get out into the community, to make partnerships with the senior citizens, to be on the opiate task force, to draw attention to how we can form partnerships to better service our kids. We are in a customer service business, and the kids are our customers, and we need feedback. And we... And we need buy-in. And it's not just the curriculum, it's also the culture. So, that takes time. I'm very pleased, after being here for eight months, the best thing that's going on in this district is people care. They care about the school. And I've been in a lot of different communities, and people don't show that level of care in other communities. I'm amazed that some people have a negative attitude about this district. And I put it as a positive in this, the fact that people recognize that and want to change that is a positive. It's a positive. The fact that we have parents that are working overtime to make sure that kids get the things that they need in extracurricular, is a positive. We're open to having more community members help us make this school district shine. And I have no doubt that we can shine. No doubt at all. We have a fabulous administrative team. We have hard-working teachers. And every teacher that I've come across truly cares about the kids here. So, that's my eight months in. And I know that things are going to get better here. I can't give you an exact date, and I won't give you an exact date. It will get better when everybody's sort of on the yacht, I'll call it a yacht, of moving the district forward and able to actually start to be more reflective about their own day-to-day practices. That's the culture shift that we want. Everybody needs to think about how they're impacting this organization and impacting student achievement rates. And for the most part, people are willing to do that. So, that's my long-winded answer.
So, being a manager and an employee, I'm a big believer in, I think, what the HR folks call the 360-degree evaluation. You know, you evaluate people that are quote-unquote above you, as well as those folks evaluating folks below them. We, as a body, individually and then collectively evaluate you. What do you need, if anything, from us, either as individual members or as a committee, to assist you and your team in moving forward?
That's a great question. Continued support. I think, if you follow my Twitter, one of the things that I constantly am saying is Webster pride. It's here every day. I feel it every single day I come to work. An organization is only as successful as the support we give each other. That's it. I just wrote it to my administrative team in my Ruthie's rap. Okay, it's a busy time of the year. We need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves and each other. And everything will flow from that. So, continued support.
So, is Ruthie's rap going to be a document that you're going to release to the public?
No.
Sounds kind of cool.
No.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? So, in our packets, we did receive the mid-cycle goals progress reports. So, what I would ask each member, I don't want to go through each one this evening because it's pretty boring and would take too much time. I would just ask that, based on the entry plan and report that Mrs. Goggin provided, as well as the summary, that you just complete this over the next few days and just email it to me. What I will then do is just summarize all five members' comments and evaluations, complete the document, and then review it at our next meeting, if that's okay with the other members. Again, thank you very much, Mrs. Goggin.
You're welcome.
So, that covered entry plan and mid-year review, correct? Perfect. Moving on with the agenda, principal report, Ginger Coleman, Park Avenue Elementary School. Good evening, Mrs. Coleman, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
So, some of the things that we have is... So, sort of just our turnaround progress. I've been talking back, I joke, this team, we've reused, which are measurable... Talked about our mid-year... Oh, thank you. It's so high, I feel like...
Yeah, you can't adjust it. It's free...
I feel more in like a booster seat in heels. So, our measurable annual progress, so I've met with him on where we're at thus far in regards to our report. We were going to be doing some unpacking of our CYOR report, and we're yet to receive part two of the AIR report. And that will be when the big unpacking occurs. And we're going to be deeper into the data with our grade-level coordinators and our data team to really dig into it, see what types of trends and patterns, and we'll compare this year's report to last year's report. So, it's actually very exciting. Some of the goals have been met, some will need to be tweaked for next year, but the progress in the first report looks positive, and we are making things. So, that's optimistic, so I wanted to share that. The third time should be the charm for our MCAS Parent Informational Night, which has been canceled twice so far, both due to snowstorms, so...
It's not next Tuesday night, right? Not that it's going to snow or anything, but...
No, we're switching, we're going to try a Wednesday now. So, we're going to go to March 28th because I really would like to get the parents and the family prior to MCAS. We have a really lovely presentation, we have handouts and materials for the parents. Some is background information, some are resources, things that the kids are doing, that they might be familiar with, that the parents might not know, a question-and-answer period, so that's scheduled for March 28th, and we'll be looking for the evening for that. Please hope for no snow, although I believe Mr. Sajak said to me that there is no coming again next week. So, anything you can do.
I'll listen to Mr. Sajak. He doesn't know what he's talking about.
All right, so that's that. As far as kindergarten registration, we started the kindergarten registration process. We're using the new enrollment packets. The secretaries are meeting with the families, they're talking to them, they're explaining the packet, they're telling them how we're going to have our kindergarten orientation right before school starts so that the kids can go in and meet the teachers, and it won't be happening now, which I believe is something that they're used to. But when we were taking a look back with the registration process that happened previously, without all the documentation of registration and enrollment, we would have a big evening affair, but many of the students were not here come September, when the kids started. And so, we wanted to push that date closer to when the kids actually were in, because that way, there's less anxiety. If you're five years old, you haven't been into the school, you want to go in, you want it to be fresh in your mind, you want to meet your teacher, you want to meet your classmates, you want, you know, your family to come down and take your picture in your room, and you want it to be really positive and really fresh the day before school starts, all of that will be happening. We're coordinating with transportation and food service, so they'll all be a part of that orientation. Just to speak a little bit to that. It's been going really well. We've given out, I think, 63 packets in two days.
Wow.
So, they are flying off of the shelves. We might not have enough. There's always room at Park Ave. But it's been really, it's been really, really nice, you know? And so, having that personal connection with the families, welcoming them, it's been really good. Student of the Month has been a really, really successful thing that we started. Each month, and I'm so grateful, I just want to give a shout-out to Ellen Nyland, she's been just wonderful collaborating and planning with me. And it started off as a really nice event the first month, but each month, it's continually grown. And we're having up to, you know, 90 additional people. It started on one half of the cafeteria, now we've branched off, and we're almost filling the cafeteria. Students are present, and you were there just recently. And so, it's such a nice time to celebrate just our students. And we're not just recognizing just their academic, we're recognizing them as just the whole student. The kids have just worked hard and just give you everything and are motivated and energetic and just sort of like a kind person, and they do the right thing without being asked. And we have, you know, grandparents and aunties and uncles, and, you know, people bring flowers and balloons. It's just really, it's been really lovely. And next month, we are going to have some state representatives coming in, they'll be taking a look at our breakfast in the classroom program because our participation has been really well, and the breakfast has been going excellent. And so, we've invited them to also partake in our Student of the Month because Ellen prepares some really lovely food, you know, hash browns, bacon, egg, and cheese, sausages, and croissants, and fresh fruit, and yeah.
What's the next date?
I know. Well, it's the last Friday of the month, so please feel free to attend. The more, the merrier. It's been wonderful. And what's nice is to have that time, too, to just circulate around and talk. Because with us, such a large school, to have that intimate time where you can meet with families and talk to them, it's been, it's been really, really pleasurable, and we're very happy with it. That's where we stand thus far.
Great. Questions or comments from the... Mr. Schennerberg.
I did have the pleasure of attending the Student of the Month breakfast. Food was excellent. Special shout-out to the janitorial staff who came to my table twice for spills.
I wasn't going to mention that.
Don't throw Nate the Great under the bus. This is a...
There was hot chocolate flowing. But it was, you know, it was a wonderful experience. I got to talk to a lot of the parents, and they all enjoyed it, like Ms. Coleman said, grandparents, aunts, uncles, there were people who brought their whole entourage, and they all got breakfast. But it's excellent. Doing a wonderful job there, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Just one question, how is it going with your new dean of students? Has that alleviated a little bit of the administrative burden?
It has. Having an extra body, Mr. Soto has jumped right into the role. I'm sure you all saw the Twitter pictures of our Super Bowl, you know, Friday, went to get the kids all amped up. He put on a giant presentation in the cafeteria, we had highlights of the Patriots playing, we all wore our Patriots gear, yes, even me and Mr. Soto. So, we had our jerseys on. It was such a nice bonding experience with the kids. He's getting into the classrooms, he's doing walkthroughs, he's making connections with the families, and it's been really lovely. With over 860 students, it's really nice to have a third administrator.
Good. Glad it's working out well.
Yeah, wonderfully.
Again, thank you to all, to you and all your team, because, at least from my perspective, again, going through price shopper and basketball courts and soccer fields, I continue to get very positive feedback, so thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Moving on with the agenda, the business managers' report. Good evening, in her first official role as business manager, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you. Been an interesting couple of weeks, all right. I have two types of transitioning, that's what I'm going to be talking tonight, transitioning in the position in the office and transitioning in our new building. There's been a lot going on, moving. I think we've kind of settled in here in our new home. I see a lot of smiles, and people are happy and hard at work, working diligently, I must say. It seems like it, feels like it's a more productive area. Everybody comes in, and it's light, and it's bright, and the flow of traffic in and out of here just seems to go naturally. You actually, when we were in Filmer, we were in our little pockets, you know, business office downstairs, special office. So, you naturally didn't see each other in the course of a day sometimes. People just went to their spots and were there for the day. And now, you see a lot more interaction between offices, which is really nice. There's a lot, the flow of communication is a lot better, I think, just being here. We couldn't have gotten out of Filmer soon enough. We still have some work to do over there. When we moved, we brought what we needed right away to get going and to be functional here. There's still information at Filmer that we need to get in there and get. We have old historical files, there's special ed files, there's still some, I think, old school committee files, some payroll files, and we have a basement full of documentation that we need to go through. So, that's going to be our focus in the next couple of weeks. I did get a call the other day on one of the snow days. I was going in, stopping randomly, checking in the morning, and I did get a call saying somebody stopped in to pick up something and said, "Do you know there's a flood in Filmer?" I said, "A bad one?" "Well, it's kind of coming down the stairs." And I said, "Okay, it's a bad one." So, I'll be there. I can joke and say, unfortunately, none of the records were destroyed, because I could have just thrown it all away. That's not the case. So, the custodians came over, they shut the water off, we had one of the valves stuck open in the boiler, which leaked up to the first floor. Fortunately, nothing was ruined, all the documentation was in place, other than a couple of carpets and stuff. When I talked to the town administrator, I said, "Do you want me to call in an insurance claim? How do you want to handle this?" And he said, "Seriously, no." He said, "No, the building's going to be on the market, as is, in a couple of months." So, and there was no damage, you know, it just got wet, he cleaned it up. So, that's taken care of, the boil is off. We drained it and let it off, so nothing freezes. And hopefully, we'll be going in there, just cleaning it up a bit, getting our documentation over here, and then the building will be vacated permanently. So, I can't wait for that to be done. As far as my role in the business office, we've been, it's been really smooth, I'd like to say. The staff has been wonderful and great. Feel like I have a good handle and comfortable with everybody around. We have a new office staff member, Colleen Piazza, I think Ms. Goggin introduced her here a couple of weeks ago, announced. She's been settling in, she's taking Ms. Spink's job for Cheryl. So, her first week was the week Ted left, February 28th, she came in. So, she's been training, she's catching on real quick, Cheryl's been working with her, so Cheryl's getting now more time in her office, which is, we're all kind of starting to settle into our roles and learning and doing more. So, it's been really good. Talk about being thrown into the fire with the weather and our communications at 4:00 in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, it's nothing new. I've been up...
They didn't tell you about that before you accepted the job?
Well, it's nothing new, I've been up, and, you know, I post stuff online, but actually talking to, and I got to give a shout-out to the highway, talking to Mr. Pizzetti, who's been nothing but pleasant in the morning when you're talking and calling somebody at 4:00 o'clock, and he's like, "Here's the deal, Mel, these are the roads." And he's communicating, and they have just been, I can't say it enough, fantastic. And the cleanup of this last storm was pretty incredible. He said, "We got it done, you're good for school tomorrow." And I'm like, "Whoa, I'm thinking delay, so we can clean up our area." And he's like, "Perfect." So, they've been fantastic, and I appreciate their support. We've also had routine audits going on the past couple of weeks, so I'm handling them. We've got the single audit, we're on the last leg of the town audit, so that's good. We've got our regular end-of-year audit done, which we'll be presenting to you at our next meeting. One of my first days also as business manager, I got an email from the finance committee asking me to attend a meeting on March 22nd. So, Ms. Goggin and I will be attending the meeting there, looking forward to speaking with them and reviewing our budget with them. So, I'm sure that'll be a good time. And then, every once in a while, I get a text message from Mr. Avliss. It's either a sunset or a message saying, "I was just watching the dolphin outside," or something like that. So, he's enjoying his retirement, and I'm glad for him, I'm happy for him, and I'm excited to be here, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Good. Any questions or comments from the committee for Mrs. Perangeli?
Just a quick question on all the old files. Are we required to hold those? Is it a certain timeframe? In the private sector, we're required to hold things for seven years, so is that why we have them? And if not, are we contemplating digitalizing them, scanning them, and then we can shred them?
We have about seven years, we keep seven years.
Seven years.
For financials, and is it special ed, is seven also? And there's a process that they've been eliminating. We go through the files. We talked about digitizing them. We held off a while back because our financial, that was something Mr. Avliss and I were working on, looking at different companies. But then, we found out that the town had purchased the module from UNIS to scan all your invoices in, and they owned it, it was just never implemented. So, we held off because why are we going to spend the money when we can utilize that system and what it did? So, I've been kind of pushing that for about a year, continually asking, and they reached out to me about, I want to say about four months ago, downtown reached out and said, "We're getting to the point where we're going to start implementing that." So, that's something we'll be looking forward to moving forward. But even the way we process our data, where, you know, everybody's thinking, "More green, what can we save? What can we scan and save and digitize so we're not having all that paper?" Most of the time, it goes down in the basement, and you don't touch it again. You know, once your audits are done, you know, you might go one or two years back, but once your audits are done, you don't really look at it again, it just kind of sits there and collects dust. But...
Yes.
Yep.
And how's everybody doing with the new lighting? In any office, when you get a new office, that's the first complaint, so...
Yeah, I haven't heard too many complaints, no. I think everybody's happy and settling in. And, you know, everybody's really excited. You can see now, people are comfortable because it's pictures up, they're organized, there's less boxes laying around, they're all gone. It's nice, we love having a place to sit and have lunch, you know, and to be able to get away from your desk for maybe 15 minutes or half an hour to go sit and have some lunch. We didn't, you know, to have, you know, you appreciate the little things, hot water.
We really like our bathroom.
We really like our bathroom, yep.
Wait a minute, who said you could eat lunch? That wasn't allowed, I thought.
So, it's... So it's, it's good. We, I can't, I don't have any complaints. We've got a couple of things to finish up here. I didn't point that out. The last bit we had, there were a couple of doors with locks not put on. They stopped in this afternoon. They'll be back tomorrow. We had a couple little pieces of carpet lifting up. They came back. They repaired them. This, everything has been good. Everything has been good.
It's all coming together.
Yeah, it really is. Really good.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? And I know you're going to be working on an open house for this new space to invite the community. I just, I was going to talk to you about this, speaking of pictures. Perhaps over time, we can get artwork from all three buildings and decorate this room.
We, we have already put the feelers out.
Okay.
We do want student art.
I saw a picture of Mr. T doing some kind of pottery and he seemed to be covered in clay. So maybe, I'm sure his artistic abilities would blend in well with the decor. And then Board of Selectmen hired a new accountant Monday night.
Yes.
Timothy, like, Bell, yes. So obviously, you'll be.
So I'm looking forward to that introduction. Last I talked to the town administrator, he hadn't been signed. But he had informed me that he met and he was hoping that they would come to and everything would be good. So I'm looking forward to meeting him. I've been working with the interim town accountants with stuff. And they really impressed with the way we are at the school system. So I've heard nothing but positive comments. He went as far as saying that I was really scared to come over here. And she said, "I am so pleasantly surprised." She said, "This is really good." So she said, you know, "We, we think the transition will be good."
Good.
Looking forward to it.
And then the last public service announcement. The tri-board slash committee meeting of School Committee, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will be held April 2nd at 6:30 in the Board of Selectmen room down at the Town Hall. And since we are now streaming live, I have been advised by somebody who's watching us live that they are still having a difficult time hearing us. So if people could please speak into the microphones and/or speak up, I would stop getting text messages. So, not that I'm not paying attention. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, student update. Lais Napoli. Good evening, Lais. How are you?
Good evening. I'm good. How are you?
Good.
How is everybody doing tonight?
Great.
So for academics, the first SAT prep class of this SAT season at Bartlett was held Wednesday, March 14th, right after school, for any sophomores and juniors who are planning on taking the SAT for fundraising. The junior class is really getting a leg up on their fundraising. Before with the joggers and now they're selling socks with the Bartlett B logo in both green and white for $10 at both lunches and during advisory. I know a lot of people that are buying them. I heard that they're really nice. The spring sports signups are beginning. I know that the boys and girls track team had the signups Wednesday, March 14th. Tennis had their signups this week. I believe that baseball and softball, too, although I'm not positive. And I'd also like to extend a congratulations to the girls cheer for placing fourth in their state competition. I had heard about it and I'm, I'm really proud of them. I think it's really awesome to know that, like, a team from our school is out there and they're, you know.
It's like you were talking about the Webster pride.
Yeah, that's, that's all I can really say to describe it. The senior faculty basketball game that was originally scheduled for March 15th was rescheduled to sometime in April because of all the inconvenience with the snow. I was really looking forward to watching it and it's always a fun time. So, I mean, you guys should come out to see it, too. I can guarantee you, you'll enjoy it.
Students guaranteed to win?
I mean, I guess it depends, but yes. On pie day, March 14th, the cafeteria distributed pies to all the students. And I know that a lot of them got up for seconds and thirds and fourths. And I'd like to extend a congratulations to the National Honor Society as well because they participated in the Honor Bowl in Milbury and they placed second. So I was really proud of them. I heard from Julie Dwyer and Connor Brennan, a couple other people that were there, that it was a really awesome experience. Mr. Bartlett was last night. I saw you there. I don't know if anybody else went, but if you didn't, you missed out. It was a pretty, it was a pretty funny show. And congratulations to Alex Polanco for winning that title this year. The Bartlett High School students and staff paid tribute to the seventeen victims of the Parkland tragedy through the signing of a banner in the auditorium. It would have been outside except the snow on Wednesday, the 14th. We got bracelets that day in Webster Kindness Matters. So, yeah. Diversity Week was last week and we had a lot of guest speakers, including Maddie McCann, Veronica Gasparian and Jeff Lassie. I really enjoy the Diversity Week speakers and I think that it's a really nice, it creates a really nice atmosphere within the building. Everybody really feels together, I guess, which is the point, you know, promoting togetherness and unity. And I really, I look forward to that every year. Going to miss it next year. And March 22nd at 6:00 PM, there's going to be a Family Feud Night at Bartlett. I've never participated or watched, but that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Lais? So, you know what the best part from an old man's opinion of last night was? I was sitting there towards the end. Now, it was funny and it was fun, but for folks that don't have children who are high school age, they don't sometimes appreciate the stress that you guys are under, academically, socially, et cetera. And we had an auditorium full of fantastic Bartlett and I think some middle school students also attended. And everybody was kind and pleasant and having fun and relaxing. There were no, you know, improper cheers. There was nothing rude going on. So I was very, very impressed. First of all, the escorts looked phenomenal, by the way. Just, just in case you're wondering, they, they were the show, but no one hated. But, but seriously, it was really nice to see all the kids in that setting and having fun and really coming together for a fun event, so. And although Alex was good, I got to give Jesse a lot of credit for. He sang a Journey song, did not lip sync it. He actually, and it was funny because I felt bad. At one point during the song, he forgot the lyrics and everybody in the audience started singing so that he could get his place. So it was, it was a good time last night.
Yeah, it was.
Well, again, thank you very much for your report. Next item on the agenda under Old Business is our monthly fundraising reports. We do have copies of them. I will not go through each individual one. Again, it is School Committee policy that we do receive on a monthly basis, all of the fundraising applications. We've got fundraisers from the baseball team, Class of 2019, Class of 20, Class of 2021, the Drama Club and the BHS National Honor Society. And again, for the public's knowledge, we don't have to approve these. They're approved through administration. This is for information, as well as these are also posted on the district website. Any questions or comments from the committee regarding the monthly fundraising reports? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the Extracurricular Program Budget Discussion. Mrs. Gogan?
Thank you. As we discussed at our last meeting, the principals have collected budgets on all the extracurricular activities that are happening at their schools. As you can see from your handout, the Bartlett High School budgets for medical careers, student council, super team, DECA, Chronicle, Art Club, Drama, National Honor Society, mock trial, band, diversity, show choir, honors banquet, totals $50,958. The show choir includes both the high school and the middle school. And as you can see from the Webster Middle School, the totals are $1,400 for the National Honor Society, Art Club, Science Fair, student council, newspaper, yearbook, musical programs, which are included in the high school and theater and drama. And one of the things the School Committee asked us to do was to give you this budget. These are the budget items that the principals have given to me. Out of this budget total, out of the $50,000 or $51,000, we are proposing to pay $20,000, give $20,000 towards busing for FY19. As I have shared with the School Committee, we currently give about, I'd say, almost $16,000 this year towards these activities, towards busing. We did speak about this at the last School Committee meeting that our FY19 budget priorities are really linked towards the entry plan that you saw tonight. There, our, our goals are putting our money in curriculum and instructional resources that we need to ensure that our students are presented grade level standards, that they have core academics provided to them. Having said that, I think that you know from my presentation also how important all of these extracurricular activities are. All the research out there in the world will tell you that kids who participate in extracurricular activities do better in school. They have, they, they are learning how to work on teams. They're developing communication skills. They're making connections through their learning. So we support these programs. And I have shared this with you for your discussion.
So just to clarify, the $50,958 is the request from kind of the wish list, from the advisors. The actual budget that's been proposed for extracurricular activities at Bartlett is, where is it? $32,109. Not including the $16,000 in transportation because that comes under the town. So you're, the proposal this evening is you're increasing the transportation line item from $16,000 to $20,000, which is a $4,000 increase.
Yep.
And in the budget that was voted upon at our, at our last meeting, there's an $814 increase in what I would call the operating budget of the extracurricular activity line items from the middle school to Bartlett. That's the number that I had calculated. So in my, from what, from the information you presented this evening, it's a $4,814 increase total in extracurricular activities, which is great. And the issue I have, and I've expressed this, I think, probably at every meeting since the budget was first presented, is I understand that the main focus of any district, as well as, especially our district, is, is investing in direct educational needs. But in the budget that was proposed by the lead, by the district leadership team and approved, has a $36,637 increase in athletics. So when you, so to me, what that says is we're increasing athletics that already has 89% of the budget total by $36,000. And we're increasing the extracurricular activities by $4,800. So I guess my question is, is that fair based on the comments that I've received? And you heard some of them at your roundtable discussion that evening, that a lot of the parents don't feel that extracurricular activities are funded as adequately or as fairly as the athletic program?
Okay. I just want to share with the community and the parents that the $36,000 increase in athletics is due to purchasing new football equipment. Prior to me coming here, the middle school sports was part of your budget, the new middle school sports. So following up with the new middle school sports is new middle school sports equipment, paying for coaches. The additional coach for football. We are, have proposed in the FY19 budget, spring track and field at the middle school level. So the coaches contractual rate increases have gone up $15,000 out of that $36,000. And there's approximately $15,000 for new football equipment. Now, those programs were put in place before I came here. So the, a lot of the $36,000 increase is going towards the middle school increases. So I want the community to know that those programs were started, put in the budget in FY18. And now we have to sort of make sure that the kids, you know, have uniforms, make sure that there's coaches. So that's the brunt of the $36,000 increase in athletics. And the administrative team and I have looked at, it's a balancing act. If you, if we don't do sport, track and field at the middle school and we take a small amount of money, which is probably what, $5,000, $4,000 for track and field, and we put that into the extracurricular activity, we're shutting the door on possibly 60 to 70 kids who may join track and field. And if we started the initiative of middle school sports, to build a stronger middle school sports program, and I'm not prioritizing, I want to be crystal clear. I'm not prioritizing athletics over drama or show choir. These were programs that were put in a budget before we came here. So we can't just say, "Okay, here they are. We're not going to fund your uniforms." So we're following up on that. Now, we, we have increased the transportation and we want to continue to support extracurricular activities. So I think the next year's budget, we might have more opportunities to do that. I don't want to say our hands were tied, but you started a football team at the middle school. And I, the kids have to have uniforms and they have to have a coach. And we would only be saving an additional $5,000, I'm, I'm not sure what the exact amount is, if we didn't do track and field. And we actually talked about that as a team, to balance that out. Do we take, you know, $5,000 away from track and field? Or do we beef up the track and field a little bit and open up more opportunities for kids?
I just realized that the football equipment.
Mr. Zajak, can you please grab a microphone because you remember people are watching, sorry.
Thank you. The $15,000 for new equipment is because the helmets have, pretty much going to expire. They only have so many years of usage and they're beyond being reconditioned. And the $15,000 is a one-time fee that's going to last for the next eight to nine years. So after this fiscal year and the equipment's purchased, that $15,000 will then become available, if we want to say. But it's equipment to sustain the program, I would say, for the next eight years. Helmets have to be reconditioned each year and they expire after 10 years. They're no longer eligible to be reconditioned.
Any other comments or questions from the committee?
Yes. Yes. So I understand that there were over 70 students that signed up for softball and baseball, which is awesome. There'll be a lot of cuts. And I think track and field is a great alternative to that, particularly knowing the number of children that won't be able to join the baseball and softball teams. Track and field, they can accept a lot more children and it's a nice feeder into the high school program. In addition, you're talking about athletics and kind of pitting athletics against extracurricular. But potentially, there could be other areas that we could fine tune and find the additional funds and not necessarily take from athletics because it is a great part of our school community and our culture. And the addition of those at the middle school has been awesome.
And just, again, I've said this before. I, not to blow my own horn, I probably pushed harder than any committee member at the time and actually voted against the budget three years ago because we didn't include any athletics at the middle school. I'm not trying to say athletics are not important. They're very important. Everything is important. I was just stating what I believe are the facts, that we're putting $36,000 of additional money, new money, into the athletic program and we're putting roughly $4,800 back. And again, I'm mostly reiterating concerns that I've received from parents on a regular basis as to whether or not that's fair. And obviously, you know, it's up to this committee as a whole to decide moving forward. The budget, the draft budget was presented with these numbers. And then at some point, once everything gets finalized, as we get closer to town meeting, we, as a committee, will, will be voting on what ultimately will be the final budget. So I just wanted to, as I have been since the budget was first presented, bring this issue to light because, and I issue to light because, and I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, what I hadn't seen, again, was this information, and, you know, what is it that advisors are looking for? Do I personally think we could do more with the extracurricular activities? Yes, I do, but that's just my opinion. Yes?
In terms of the money that is provided for the extracurricular activities, particularly at Bartlett, is that, would you say, put towards this, the $50,000? Or is the $50,000 in addition to what the $32,000 pays for?
Mr. Nilton, I apologize. Can you grab that, please?
We have not budgeted for the things that they're looking for in this $50,000.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the $32,000 is just to pay for the stipends for all of the-
Correct. That's the current budget. My understanding is this is the wish list, for lack of a better term, that you receive from the advisors.
Because we've never had anything like this before that's been requested by advisors. So, when we had the conversation back in the fall, I asked them to come up with a prioritized, you know, list and what the total would look like if they were to be able to get additional funding for their programs above and beyond the advisor's stipend.
Okay.
So, that's what this $50,000 represents.
So, I wonder if we would, if it's something we're going to consider, whether it's now or in the future, if we would potentially need to have this broken down even more. Because, for example, the $29,100 for show choir, is that including the transportation costs, which we are funding partly? Okay. Okay.
No, I do have the details on all of the budgets. I think it's, I think this is a good, healthy conversation. And I want to stress to the community that what we're trying to do is make sure that our kids have multiple opportunities. I think it's very important for people to understand that the budget before us sets the tone for what you're doing in the next year. So, the budget before us set the tone that we were developing a new middle school athletic program. That was a priority here in this district. We can see that the middle school sports program has brought pride, has gotten kids who have not been physically active out on the teams, and we will develop a stronger athletic program at the high school that way. That does not mean that we don't value the other extracurricular activities, and I don't want the community to think that. We, like Mr. Zajak had said, you have to have equipment that meets particular standards, and we had to purchase new material. Does that mean the next year's budget will have some extra money? I anticipate it will. And I anticipate that, knowing that this is a priority, we will be able to build this in. But I want to stress again, the FY19 budget has been built around curriculum and instructional needs, and that's been our priority.
Mr. Schennerberg.
Just a couple of comments. One, I'm just very glad that you guys did not eliminate the middle school track and field. Just personally, I think that would have been a great disservice to the children. And just, because I don't know if you mentioned it, just for the record, for the people watching at home, the information that we're currently talking about, it came about as a result of, like Mr. Herten said, oftentimes, we get stopped in the grocery store, and I've had two daughters going through show choir. Mr. Herten's had more kids than I can count go through show choir. So, we often get stopped and asked, how can you help? How about funding? And we always said, we don't, we can't fund something we don't know how much it costs. We've never, this is the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that we've ever gotten numbers in terms of what these committees need in terms of funding. So, I think this is a great starting point. I think it's something we do need to focus on. I don't know if it's something we're going to be able to address tonight or in this budget without robbing Peter to pay Paul, so to speak. But I would like to see that breakdown, obviously not tonight, but particularly with show choir. I know, unfortunately, the cost that gets involved there, but it'd be nice to see how much of that is transportation, how much is costumes. I believe this year, they rented costumes. Is that correct? Does anybody know?
If you wouldn't mind, there's a microphone right there, and just make sure the green button's on.
Please. Thank you.
Karen Schreger of the Webster Music Boosters. So, I have two middle school students, one in show choir and one in the band at the middle school. So, your question was the costumes. We, the high school this year purchased used costumes. We ordered used costumes from a school in, I think it was Nebraska, it was in the Midwest somewhere. We have a group of parent volunteers who spends multiple Saturdays sewing and altering costumes so that they fit our kids. The middle school costumes were purchased, those were purchased new, but Mr. Carney is really good about trying to find us the best possible deal. You know, we're a group of, we have a board of seven members. We have an executive member, chairperson, vice chair, myself, fundraising coordinator, and a public relations representative. So, we have a small group of parents that come to our meetings and give us a hand each month with events. Wait, I know I have to read off my thing. Oh, it won't open. So, we were here tonight because we knew, we had heard that the extracurricular activities was going to be on the agenda. So, our main focus for the boosters is raising funds for both the high school and middle school show choir. We've also funded two events this year for the high school band, including the Berklee Jazz Festival. We, as a group, understand that all sports and athletics are an excellent extracurricular opportunity for many students. It's, but for our students, or a lot of our students, they're not athletes, they're not playing sports, they're not running track and field, they're not playing football. And we want our students to be, I guess, taken into account as much as the others. So, our organization would love to be able to expand and enhance our show choir groups, the bands, and all the music programs at the school. But unfortunately, at this time, we barely raise enough money to fund the basics for the show choir group. And we do this by, we have to have at least one fundraiser per month in order to just pay for the basics. So, we feel we have an extraordinary group of students who deserve all the support that can be given. So, this weekend, as you all know, we're hosting the middle school show choir festival and competition, and we would like to actually invite the entire school committee to come and see, sorry, to see not only what our school is capable of, but what other schools are doing with their music programs and their show choirs, so that you can see what we could be capable of if we had the support from the schools, or the funding, or some funding from the schools. Not that the music boosters would go away, we would still continue to raise money and funds just to help enhance the program if we had some help monetarily.
How much do you guys raise roughly each year that goes directly to?
Last year, so, we raised over $20,000 a year. It's pretty expensive. I don't have the entire breakdown, and I apologize. I can get you the, our whole budget, the music booster's budget and what we spend the money on. But just for the arrangement of the musics, the music, the licensing of the music, the choreography-
I have the details if you want me to show-
Oh, you have it all? Did Mr. Carney give it to you?
Yeah. I think it's important for people to hear this. Their request for the show choirs for both schools was $29,100. $4,000 for a choreographer for the senior high, $1,500 for a choreographer for the middle school, for custom musical arrangements at the senior high, $3,000. Licensing for the music is $1,500. Songs for the middle school, $500. Costumes are $10,000 for the high school. Costumes for the middle school are $4,500. And then, they did put some busing in here. It looks like $2,500 for five competitions for the high school and $1,600 for the middle school. I do, I want to just stress again that the school district has put about $16,000 into transportation for all extracurricular activities, and we pay stipends to all of our teacher leaders. So, I think it's about $32,000 for stipends for the high school and about, maybe almost 10 for the middle school. So, we are supporting you the best we can this year. And I definitely want parents to understand that we are not saying athletics is more important than these extracurricular activities. When you create a budget, you're creating your future plans. You're actually putting the money where your plans are. And so, the middle school athletic program has been a goal of this district to get back in place. So, now that that's back in place, we have to fund it to a certain level. I think next year is going to be a different story for us, but I don't want parents to think that the school's not paying anything for extracurricular activities because $32,000 for stipends at the high school, plus, you know, $10,000 for stipends at the middle school, plus an additional $20,000, we are contributing, and we can, we'll continue to contribute. And I want parents to understand that. We'll get there, but we got to get there with a plan. And I want people to walk away with, it isn't one thing against another. Together, we need to understand that we want all kids to have different opportunities. And we had some very healthy discussions as an administrative team. Do we cut track and field at the middle school because it hasn't started? And what we were, would have done would have been to shut the door on opportunities for kids. And that's not what we want. We want all kids to have a variety of opportunities. So, I want you to hear that from us.
We appreciate that. We just want you to, I guess, not forget about us.
We want to raise awareness that Nilton, Chris does a lot of money. I don't think I need, am I really?
They can't hear.
You don't need to see me.
She doesn't. I remember when she was in show choir.
We're just trying to raise awareness. There's a lot of, all right. We're just trying to raise awareness because, you know, I myself was in the program when I was younger. I was in the program actually with Mr. Kara's. They're younger than. I just want, it's very near and dear to my heart. I was in all of the music, you know, band and chorus and show choir and music. And it's near and dear to my heart, and we want to raise awareness that the program that these kids really come together, Nashville was very, very special to these kids. They formed bonds with other, who are doing the same thing as them in, you know, national, you know, they also had Andover, which was nice because they're going to be going to Andover. So, no, it's more of just to put it out there and say, like, do a lot, we raise a lot of money for these kids, and we just would like support as well. Not that, again, that we're not going to go away, we're going to continue to do this, but just to raise the awareness that it's wicked expensive. And I will say that Mr. Carney is amazing, does wonders with what we do, and he really cares.
So, we just hope to see all of you there Saturday night. We'll be there.
Do we get the details on that, the show choir competition?
Yes.
So, the show starts, the doors will open around 5:00. Our middle school, New Attitude, will go on first at 5:30. So, what's happening actually is Friday night and all day Saturday, we'll have three schools here. We're going to have Tantascwa, Randolph, and Webster Middle, who will participate in a workshop, and they're going to actually learn a couple of new songs and new routines. So, our kids will perform their competition routine first, the rest of the schools will then compete. So, coming is Shepherd Hill, Charlton Middle, well, not Shepherd Hill, Dudley Middle School, Charlton Middle School, Tantascwa, Randolph, and Windsor Locks, Connecticut. They're all coming. We're actually hosting the biggest competition of the season for the middle school, and we have the smallest auditorium. We'll see how that works. But, so, it starts at 5:00. The doors will open at 5:00. Our group performs first at 5:30, and then, the three schools that learn the new routine on Friday and Saturday will then perform at the end. And Impressions, the high school group, is also going to perform, they're considered our host group. So, they'll be performing at the end.
And this is one of our largest fundraisers.
Yes. This is hopefully going to be our biggest fundraiser of the year. So, we're selling the tickets for $17 apiece, but you guys all have a free ticket waiting for you at the door.
Don't say that publicly, it's probably a violation of the campaign.
I know, I know, I know. For clarity, we will all pay.
Anyone who meet your fundraising goals-
Yeah, so, well, you guys can fight-
Charge us more, we should pay more.
And a lot has gone into, into trying to get everything that we needed for the competition as well, you know, food, name it, everything that we needed that every other competition has. We have a hospitality, you know, a lot of planning has gone into it.
But, I guess, come and check it out Saturday, it'd be great to have you all.
Liz, did you?
I did.
Okay. If you could just use the microphone, believe it or not, because then I'll get text messages that we can't hear people, so.
Thank you. My name is, my name is Liz Lehens, and I'm a huge student advocate. My question, one of the things I wanted to ask is, which school is, we have show choir that actually is part of school that is, is it Dudley? They actually have class at Shepherd Hill. So, they actually have, every week, they have this as part of their curriculum, everything is included for them, they don't do any fundraising like that. So, already starting out, well, they do fundraising, but starting out, they are way up here. So, as all of you know, huge poverty rate here. Sense of community, sense of pride, yes, but also, we're all going to the same people every time to fundraise. And I got to tell you, they're saturated in this town. We're struggling financially here. So, we're all struggling, and I think that having an open conversation like this is important, but also, show choir is not like mock trial and deca, which is an extracurricular activity as well, but these kids are getting their heart rates up. I'm wondering, is it something to consider that possibly show choir should become sport? Where they're exercising, they're singing, but they're dancing their rear ends off. Is it something to look outside of the box? Is it not? Something to consider? I know that funds are going to be a little bit allocated to us, which is greatly appreciated, but, you know, looking at other aspects, like you had mentioned, is hugely appreciated. But is it possible, like, for example, the football sports, I think it's great. I think it's important to have track and field, it's important to have a football team, great to have it in the middle school. Last year, they were all included in the high school. Can they still be part of the high school and then do everything next year? Or slowly buy part of the most important helmets and things and keep the used pads for football and allocate more towards extracurricular activities so that it's partway here and there? It's something to consider. I like the ringtone. So, you know, for us, for example, I'm a fundraising coordinator, recently took on that position, and going from place to place, you know, you kind of fall upon deaf ears. So, it's kind of tough for us. So, if it's something that could be thought of that way as well, you know, perhaps it needs to be thought outside of the box. But I can tell you that I myself, I bought a used van so I can drive these kids. They don't have places to go. I'm going to cry about it, but these kids don't have food. This weekend, I'm fundraising to get food. We have kids that are, I stick my nose in their business because these kids don't get out. If they're not traveling now, they're not getting out. It's something to think about. These kids, we have the food program in the summer for a reason, they're not eating. In an athletics-dominated school, we have examples like this, that these kids need to get out. I'm working all the time, as are just a few of these, a few of these parents. People aren't listening to us, and it's frustrating. You have kids that don't fit in. You get to go to a program like show choir, and you see kids, they're there and they don't fit in. But at show choir, they fit in. So, the kids that you're not reaching, they're being reached in show choir. You have kids, people like myself, I make it my business so that kids aren't walking- You have kids, people like myself, I make it my business so that kids aren't walking home to McDonald's at night after a practice. I give them a ride. These are parents that don't have the finances. Some of them actually don't have the mental capacity to do this. I fundraise for lots of things in this community, not just show choir, and I'm doing things all the time. I know these kids. I know their family situations. I know what it's like. So Ruth Ann, excuse me, I appreciate what you're doing and I really do, but I can tell you from someone firsthand that knows these families, it's tough. And I'm like a parent. I see them up on stage. I am so proud of them, so proud of them. But, you know, not everyone fits into the National Honor Society spectrum. You get extracurricular activities and they're fantastic, but they're going to be also for people that are highly educated and scoring high in this community. There's other kids that don't fit into that realm and we need help. And sure, we can wait another year, but you know what? That's another year for those kids to get missed. That's another year for those kids to have things after school. You know, if you talk to most of the police officers, I'm sure they'll tell you, you know, that times after school are when these kids need to be engaged. They need to be engaged in programs that we care about, programs that they're going to be welcomed in. And I have to tell you, I don't know if it's a rumor or not, but I was told Mr. Carney volunteers his time for New Attitude, that I think that, I don't even know if he even gets paid for that. He spends hours and hours and these kids have mentors that are so important from a very few, a very small group of kids, of families, I'm sorry, that care like myself and these people. So if you can please just consider a little bit further and look into it a little bit more deeply, because it's much more than just a few hundred dollars. And I'm telling you, we're working hard to fundraise for this. Nothing is handed to us. We're really working hard and we're thinking outside of the box in other areas as well, but this is something that really, we're missing out opportunities. There's places that we can't afford to go to and we need help. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry for crying, but it's very near and dear to my heart because I know these kids personally and all of us do. And it's something really that we could really use the support. So thank you.
I want to thank you for sharing and reiterate, because we are on TV, that we want the community to know that we want these programs for our kids. And for anyone listening, we want and will readily accept any donations that people have to make sure that these programs are funded. And I've seen the kids. They came here at the first school board meeting, you were at the school committee meeting. They're talented, they're shining, and we want them to grow this way. So we will figure out different ways, but please know that we are doing something and it's not that we are not doing anything and I don't want that perception out there. We are doing what we can now and we will continue to think out of the box and plan ahead. I'm very proud of the kids. I saw the show choir perform at the beginning of Diversity Week and they rocked it. I was getting tweets from Mr. Carney while he was in Nashville, their trip was amazing. Those are lifelong memories for the kids. The middle school kids came here and performed and shined, glowing. And we're behind you. Know that we're behind you.
No, I appreciate that. I think also one thing to just also mention is that those children that are autistic, those children that are not athletic that way, those children are doing band, those are the children that we're helping. Those are the children that are doing pit band and marching band. You know, not everyone is super athletic and has that capability, but we're also reaching those students that aren't fitting in and that's another key. So we're much more than show choir and, you know, funding for all of this, it falls on our shoulders and, believe me, when I say falls, it's something that we're very proud to take part of. However, the support needs to be really a little bit more for us if possible. So thank you.
Liz, if I may, I don't mean to embarrass you in public, but I just want to say publicly, I don't think most people in the community understand how much you do for children. And I probably don't even know half of what you do, but I just, you know, on behalf of the school committee and the community, you're one of the most kind people I have ever met in my life and Liz, I'm sure you have others helping you, but every year she raises money for, is backpacks the right term?
Yeah.
Or gift bags?
Yeah.
Around Christmas time? And you raise enough money for every student at Park Ave in the middle school?
I actually, for the past eight years, I'm not part of any program or anything on my For the past eight years, I've bought almost every student in town a gift for Christmas with the result of friends of mine. I have given so many, Mr. Zajak knows, he's new. I've overwhelmed him already. There's more coming. The video game club, just a video game club, had no video games. So I heard that, I'm like, well, I'm going to find people that have video games because how many people have Wii games and things that they don't use? So I've got, I have four game systems, I've given him several, all kinds of things, backpacks for the kids. Last year, I had eight kids that I raised money for season passes for Six Flags, including food. On those days, you can bring a friend, my van was full. I mean, I do all kinds of things because I know there's a need. So.
Well, again, just thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And just to reiterate, you know, what Mrs. Gogan said, my intent with this whole discussion from the beginning, I'll repeat again, was never to pit any aspect of our district athletics, for example, versus extracurricular activities. I want to thank all of you for attending this evening because to Mr. Schenover's point, you know, these are the heartfelt comments and feelings and opinions that we receive. And just another reminder to the community, I just saw an article, I think it was in today's paper, that another community is raising their busing fees, their athletic fees and their, before-school activity fees. And again, we don't charge for any of that. We don't charge to pay athletic, we don't charge for busing, we don't charge to park your car at the school. We provide meals, yeah, we don't charge for meals. So I understand we do a lot and I hope, no guarantees, that obviously as we continue through the budget process, we just take a little more in-depth assessment. And that was my intent, was really to get, find out from the advisors really what they need and then figure out if there's any chance that we can add a little to it this year. That was my whole intent throughout this process, so.
And we thank you for what we do. I also want to really acknowledge that we're supportive of everything. It wasn't always that way growing up, so we really did have to fight for this. It doesn't seem to be here that way. So I truly appreciate it. My daughter is there and I really do too, as somebody who grew up, I, who was not athletic in one way, shape, or form at all, I appreciate you. I can tell that there's a huge.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. McCarron. So on this committee, you've got myself, you've got Mr. Hurtin and Mr. Schenover, and I know for sure who all had kids there. I was, so because I'm old and I've been around.
You're not old, older.
I was with the group that started the Junior Show Choir Festival. We started it. I was with the original music boosters. So way back to, and fundraising is, we've done crazy things. I mean, anything we could think of to raise money, we did. And, you know, one of the toughest things back then too was we needed band uniforms because our band uniforms were an embarrassment. And I think we needed to come to the school for like $10,000 and we raised an additional 15 because we needed 25. But that was, again, it's one of those big-ticket items. So I think this whole exercise is great because as Brian said, this is the first time that we've ever seen any kind of a budget wish list on, you know, if you could get the money, how much do you need and how much would you spend in the course of a year? So it's great information. And also, it's very important to know that, you know, that big amount for the sports is an exception. It's a one-time thing and it's to support something we voted to create a year ago, so we really need to follow that commitment. And I would agree with everyone that hopefully, you know, as time goes on next year, that we'll be able to find some additional money for show choir. I mean, I can tell you, I remember when sitting in the audience many times, seeing these kids who were friends of my kids and I was always amazed when I saw them up on stage, truly amazed of what they could do.
I have to say, I think I have the shyest daughter in the world.
You know, so I went through all that, with hiring choreographers, I know what it's like to get the licensing, I know, all of that. It's all pricey and people don't realize too, that schools have to purchase the rights to music.
Right.
You know, they think it's free or whatever, but nothing is free.
This is my first year's, my first full year's treasurer and I was shocked when I saw how much it actually.
The other thing too is, I would just caution, don't compare us to Shepherd Hill. They're a regional school. They have a lot more kids, they have a lot more resources. And their school financing is different in several ways than our school financing, being regional, they have some advantages.
And they have two different music groups.
There you go.
Their high school and their middle school.
Yeah, I mean, they just have the numbers.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, it broke my heart years ago when we lost to Junior ROTC. I thought that was a great program for certain kids who really needed that. And we lost it just because of our population and enrollment and it wasn't through any fault of our own. But that was a group that really, it was fun to watch them grow and certain kids, that are a great team. So same thing with show choir. You know, you see kids up there that you would not believe, they're up there dancing. And I saw their show because I was at the diversity presentation and top-notch, they really, you can see why they're in Nationals this year. They're really, you know, very tight and, you know, like I said, I've seen them way back when it wasn't so pretty to watch. But they've come a long way.
Not hurt yet, right?
You know, certain people, you know, yeah, we go way back, we go way back. But again, I, you know, the whole premise though, I think this information is great. It's important, it's needed because we need to know, you know, what they need for support to see if, over the course of a few years, we can find the resources. But if we didn't know, you would just hear people complain. And so information is great, you know, and we can do, we can do more. We can definitely do more. Can we do it all? No. But we can do more and, you know, probably not going to be this year because the budget is pretty well set, but moving forward, as long as we know this is one of our areas that we need to focus on, we can certainly do more up show.
Well, if we can get people there this weekend, then.
I heard it was sold out.
No, not yet.
Not yet?
No.
Okay. Okay. We'll try to be there.
Any other questions or, Mr. Schenover?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you for coming out. We say it all the time when we see parents and we talk to them to come to the meetings. Appreciate you guys coming out and more importantly, appreciate your heartfelt comments, letting us know where you stand. Just on a side note, I do not miss the days of my dining room table being full of show choir dresses that need to be altered, listening to bzzzz hours on end. Glad my daughters are done. And then just a special shout out to Senpai Jared sitting over there. Thank you for coming as well.
Ms. Chairman? I'll just add one final thing.
Sure.
That Bartlett made it to the Nationals this year and not Shepherd Hill.
Sure, they did not.
And we're grand champions, right, at Shepherd Hill?
Yes, we were good.
First time in a long time, so, I mean, those are big milestones, big milestones for a small school like Bartlett.
Yep.
We don't want to compare to Shepherd Hill except when we win. I guess that's the whole premise.
You got it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just refocus?
Yes.
Webster Pride and Webster?
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, next item under new business is out-of-state field trip grade five to Woodstock, Connecticut. Speaking of band and wonderful music programs, Mrs. Baggett has requested an out-of-state field trip to the Hyde Cultural Center in Woodstock on May 24, 2018, and I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the district assessment data presentation, the most exciting part of the evening. Mrs. Gogan.
Thank you. The presentation that you're about to see is the results of the internal district assessments that we currently use in our district. And the purpose of showing this data to you tonight is not to, not to be critical of what the data represents. It's really to show you what the baseline data is. And I would like to let you know that my administrative team worked diligently on putting this presentation together. We've learned a couple of things at looking at our assessments and I will tell you that we are going to be looking at the possibility of using new assessments for next year that are more user-friendly and usable for teachers. Data and assessing kids is as good as how you use it. And if you just assess the kids and push the data aside and it doesn't help you change your instructional practices, then it's useless. I'm not saying that this data is useless, but it's been quite challenging to disaggregate it and understand it. And so I think next week, we have a couple of busy weeks coming ahead, we have, our administrative team will be looking at three new assessments. We will be looking at that, those assessments, not only with the administrators, but teacher representatives, they will be looking at it and will be collecting feedback. So without further ado, I am going to pass the presentation to the administrative team and I will ask our new director of curriculum in math and science to take it over.
Thank you very much. I've been told to put my face right up to the microphone, so hopefully those at home viewing can hear me. I'm very pleased to be here tonight with my colleagues to share our district assessment data presentation with you tonight. And I'm just learning how this, just learning how this works. There we go. Okay, so the creation of this presentation was a team effort as Mrs. Gogan told us. Unfortunately, because of the weather and the cancellation and rescheduling, there are some team members who could not be here today. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Janice Daniels as well as Michelle Budney for their efforts on behalf of this presentation. They did a wonderful job putting this together. So go to the next slide. Okay, so what you can see from this slide is that we actually have two types of benchmark assessments to share with you tonight. We have the DIBELS assessment and we have the Galileo assessment. The DIBELS assessment is a universal screener. It was given for grades K to 4 in reading. It assesses early literacy skills. They are brief assessments and the data is used to inform instruction. And with Galileo, that is a benchmark assessment that assesses mastery of skills. It was administered grades 5 through 10 in ELA and math and we looked at student growth as well as performance levels. And the information you're going to see tonight correlates to state testing. So I would like to, at this point, hand the presentation over to Ginger Coleman, principal of Park Ave Elementary, so that she can discuss the results of DIBELS K to 4.
Hello again. So DIBELS stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills and it is what the school has been using for quite some time. It is quick, it's a one-minute assessment. Students are DIBLED, if you will, monthly and/or bi-weekly depending upon their current levels of progress. Okay? So if we start off with kindergarten, you'll see kindergarten is assessed for their nonsense word fluency. And you notice that there's only a middle category there because when students first enter kindergarten, they're not assessed, so they do the mid-year assessment. And so it says NWF, which is the nonsense word fluency, and the CLS is correct letter sound. So by the mid portion of benchmarking. So by the mid portion of benchmarking, I'll talk non educator terms, correct letter sound would be of nonsense words. So it might say, like, "nop," okay, would be a nonsense word, it's a, a non-real word, because they want to see if the children have the ability to sound out those words, as well as then eventually blend them together. So the CLS is correct letter sound, so that we would expect the student by the mid-year to be able to say "nn, ah, p," and then eventually, they would just see the word and go "nop" and blend the whole thing together. That lets us know that their letter-sound symbol correlation is starting to, and that's an indicator of early literacy, okay? So at the mid-year, you can see we had 53% of our kindergarteners that were at the intensive level, meaning they still needed quite a bit of instruction in that, and that would be expected. 20% were right at the strategic level, and then 27% were right at the core level of instruction, so that's to be expected. Next slide, please.
Can I interrupt you for one minute? What does core mean in these assessments?
It's right on grade level.
Okay. And strategic is, would be considered advanced?
Um, no. So intensive would be, you know, the students that were not performing at where we needed them to be performing at. So if you start intensive, and then you go strategic, so we're targeting specific skills, so if you, if I just put it into like a stoplight, you know, like a red, a yellow, and a green, okay, would that make more sense? Okay.
You gotta dumb it down for me, it's perfect.
No, no, it's not dumbing it down, it's just we have this, you know, teacher lingo, we talk this data, and for the general public, I think it's really important that we understand, you know, the type of data that we're using and why we use it. So in grade one, they're also assessed nonsense word fluency, which is, you know, a continuation of the NWF, but then it goes into the WWR, which is the whole words read, and so that's when we would expecting our students to be blending. So when I used the "nop" example before, no longer would we expect students to be doing the "nn, op," and we would expect them to see the word and just say "nop," okay? We need them to be blending those sounds together. So when we started the year in, in grade one, you can see we had 64% of our students that were entering grade one that were still at that very intensive level. And then if we look at the read, that intensive level has decreased by 50%, which is fantastic. And so those kids that were, you know, deemed to be, you know, very in need of still developing that skill set, has decreased by half. Our strategic level went up only 1%, but the kids that are right at the core level increased by 50%, so that if you see that curve, what's happening is they're coming out of that intensive level of need, they're getting targeted direct explicit instruction, and then what's happening is we're bringing them right up to those grade level expectations, so.
Before you change off of this slide, I think it's very important to note that I strongly believe that these results on, especially at mid-year and January, grade one, are directly related to the new pilot reading program, that we have really focused on explicit reading instructional practices, and typically, in grade one, you'll see kids struggling in this area. The fact that we're moving in the right direction is telling me that we're on target, and, and so, that doesn't typically happen in grade one, in January, so.
And, and she's correct in saying that, and so what we're seeing is that foundationally in K and one, this is, we're really, really developing that nice, strong foundation that we want to have. Any questions on that? Okay. So you can see here in grade two, now, grade two goes to DORF, okay, and so, it's actually oral reading fluency is, is what it stands for. And what you need to know is that they start off the year monitoring nonsense word fluency, and then that falls off, so we're not really looking at that, because by grade two, we really want them reading. And so oral reading fluency, when they came in in grade two, we had 52% of our students that were at that heavy-duty intensive level. That only decreased mid-year to 46%, but there's good news. Our strategic level, even though it looks like it maintained, it was stagnant at 25%, it actually wasn't. We picked up more in our core group from 23% to 29%, but what the good news is, ta-da, is that at the beginning of the year, our expectation for oral reading fluency was that students would be reading 80 words per minute. So not only are we continuing, and then mid-year, so I should tell you mid-year, so they go from 80 would be the expected words per minute, mid-year is 100 words per minute. So not only are we increasing the rigor, but we're increasing the expectation. So even though we've increased the expectation, we've still seen growth, okay? And then by the end of the year, we're looking for the kids to be at about 111 words, okay? So realistic gains for grade two fall about at one and a half words of, per week of growth. That's what, it would be realistic. Ambitious would be about two words per week. I had big charts, and they're actually in my car, but I didn't want to inundate you, but I'm kind of a data geek, and I really love this stuff, so, I was like, I'll leave my color-coded charts in there. But what we noticed when we teased out the data, was that our grade two students, even though the curve isn't exactly where we need it to be yet, most of our students in grade two have been reaching actually ambitious plus gains. So they're, they might not have yet moved a category, but they have moved up within the category, and many of them are just on the cusp. So if our, we actually did a trajectory as well to continue where we expect them to be, so it appears that many of our students, based on their growth rate so far, will be hitting our end-of-the-year benchmark, so it's very promising. Um, next slide. Thank you, Jill, this is nice. I don't have to do the tech part of it. In grade three, it's the same thing, they look at the oral reading fluency as well, and so we started off with 41% of our students, obviously at intensive, that dropped to 38. We picked up more into our strategic level, and then our core, it looks like we went from 28 to 25%, which looks like we dropped a little in the core. But they go from a 97-word to 115 words, and by the end of the year, they're expected to be at 123. Okay? Now, realistic gains for a grade three student, because as they get older, the realistic and the ambitious drops. That's why we really need to hit them hard and heavy when they're young, we really need that super-strong foundation, you know, K1, two. Would be a one-word gain a week would be realistic. Ambitious for a third grader is only one and a half, and the older they get, the less they're, they're, would be expected to gain, okay? So within this group as well, when we teased out the third-grade students, and we looked at where are they falling, we were fortunate to see that many of those students, that their gains were above average as well. So many of them were at ambitious or ambitious plus, which would put them over a two-word-a-week gain. Okay? Questions? Okay. I could talk about this all day, you know. Moving right along to fourth grade. So in fourth grade, our scores look relatively flat. They start off the year at 111 would be the expect, expecta, ex, uh, expected oral reading fluency, and by the end of the year, they're supposed to be at 144 words for the year. So we started at the 61 and dropped to 56, and we've only gone up a few points in between, but what we have realized is that although some of our students are not yet at benchmark, and their realistic gain is a half a word a week. So we all know you can't gain a half a word a week, so really, they're looking to gain two words a month, when if you look at the younger students, they're gaining two words a week, okay? So you can see how much it falls off as they get older, which is why really, providing that core instruction when they're younger is critical. We have discovered that some of those students, their reading comprehension, although they're, they're not still fluent, that they are using all of the strategies, they are decoding, and they are understanding the critical reading skills, they're going back, they're rereading, they're going back into the text, and so their comprehension is on the rise as well. And we do expect them to make their gains, so at the end of the year, we're hoping to see a big uptick. But we've had to go back and do some remediation with some of the students that were missing some of those critical foundational phonemic awareness skills.
Before we move off of DIBELS and go into Galileo, I just want to note that we will continue to be using DIBELS, it's a useful progress monitoring tool. One of the important things about DIBELS is it's a quick snapshot of where kids are. Now we have a reading program that has specific interventions built in, so that teachers can align the intervention with the skill that the student is, is missing, and I think we will gradually continue to see growth in this area. And so I just wanted to put that out, I had started saying that we were going to be looking at all of our assessments, I was really referencing, referencing Galileo, which we're going to talk about next.
And we did look, we did a comparison too, because it's nice to look at just fourth grade this year as a whole, but we, what we took a look at was, was first grade, last year's first grade to this year's second grade, and last year's second grade to this year's third grade, because we really want to see, where did those students leave, and where are they now? Because we're looking at them over time, and when we looked at them over time, when you are piloting any type of a new, new program, new materials, et cetera, typically, instead of seeing your trajectory going up, you will see a little bit of a dip, because the materials are new, teachers are learning it, students are learning it, this year we did not. So where the students ended in grade one, they, that group has continued to increase, and so, I did do like a little longitudinal study, and took grade one last year to this year to grade two. So even though with all of the new, they've gone up, two to three has gone up, and three to four has gone up, so we have seen that continued trajectory of growth.
I just have a quick question on Park Ave. Do we use an assessment for math?
We are peeling the onion and looking at all of our assessments. So Jill's been recently hired, and her mission this year is to put together a math committee and look at math. We do need a consistent math program. So part of assessments are not just the assessments that we purchase and then use, we have to have common assessments in our classrooms, and we need to look at what we're using for common assessments. There are math assessments in the programs that we use in our math program, but we have a variety of math programs going on in the district right now, so that's a huge priority on Jill's plate. We have two, we have a lot of things going on, and we have two or three sample kits coming in of a math program, and Jill is in the process of putting together a math committee of teachers, so that teachers can come in and look at these resources, and that's the next area that we are going to be looking at putting in a consistent program. And when you, when you purchase a program, that's not the answer, but what it does is it gives you equitable resources in all the classrooms. And today's research-based programs come with intervention kits for special education, ELL kits. So we're making sure that kids are getting exposed to the same material, they come with common assessments, so the teachers don't have to take the time, they could use the common assessment and tweak it, but it gives us more materials for the teachers, so that's our, on our, in our strategic plan. It's, there's so many things going on, but I'm not going to keep going on, because we have a presentation.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question also?
Absolutely.
With the new reading program, is there any assessment tools that we have with that program? Or is it just the DIBELS that we're relying on?
Oh, no, DIBELS, DIBELS is just a quick assessment. We are actually doing, there are unit tests that the teachers are giving at the end of each theme that they teach, they're able to go in, they modify them, so each grade level meets as their CPT, they meet with myself, our reading coach, the dean, the assistant, and they design those theme tests that they're giving at the end, the unit assessments, to see how much have they learned throughout that unit, and they do the same test, so if you're in one teacher's classroom in grade one, the other grade one teacher will give the exact same assessment. And so, they've embedded, there's weekly assessments, there's unit assessments, there's a multitude of assessments, but we don't want to give up valuable teacher time to assess, 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 because they need to teach. And so they're being very mindful as to which tests they give, and when do they give them, and how much instructional time are they willing to sacrifice to assess, because ultimately, the goal of assessment is to drive your instructions. They need to get information out of the assessments, that they know how to more target their instruction in their small group and in their whole group, but they are all using them consistently with the new program. Is that whole?
Yeah, it does. I, as a parent of a first grader who has done DIBELS drills with my daughter, and I'm now volunteering in the classroom doing DIBELS drills with some of the kids that are struggling, I watch their, their whole demeanor change when they see the timer come out.
Yep. It, that's just one, yep, it is, and that's why it's just one little assessment, and that's why it's not the end-all, be-all. You know, it's one, it's a quick snapshot, because we don't want children speed-reading, and that's one of the misconceptions with DIBELS. So, and it is, and people see the timer and they get nervous, and that's why when I, when I spoke to grade four in particular, we have some students that are really reading and understanding what they're doing, but they're just not at the rate that we would consider fluent. And so when you're fluently reading, you're taking all of that time, you're processing the information, you're thinking about it, you're putting the pictures in your head, and you're understanding what you read. If you speed-read, you're just reading words on a page, and there's no comprehension. And so, it's, it's a dual-pronged fork, if you will, you know? Fluently, you're not spending so much time decoding, where you're tripping over the words, where you're losing that comprehension, which is why some of those drills are important, because some of that needs to be, you know, automatic, so that when they're reading, they're not spending all of their time decoding, so that it's impacting their comprehension. Yep, but it's just a quick snapshot, it's not everything.
Right.
Okay.
So, and the good news is, as the superintendent mentioned, the assessment programs that we are reviewing, they include math and ELA, both at the elementary and at the middle and at the high school level.
That's great. I mean, I just imagine 143 words read in a minute, you, you have to be speed-reading, because that's more than two words a second, if you think about it, 60 seconds in a minute, in fourth grade, you need to read 143 words in a minute. I can't imagine that I would be able to comprehend what I, I know they're nonsense words, but I can't imagine comprehending what I've.
No, they're not nonsense, it's not a nonsense word. So nonsense words are only done in K and one, it's actually a passage, so it's a passage that has a topic, and it makes sense, and many of the words are, when you think about, if you're reading any type of a passage or a novel, it's really just one page. It would be just as if you read, you know, we don't have, I was going to say the harvest of the month, but that's absolutely not what they would be reading in one minute, but just one page, so maybe three paragraphs, and when you count up every single word, you know, "I," "the," "A," all of that adds up, and so that works out to be about 144, but it's no more, you know, than a page, and the font is much larger, you know, where I wouldn't need my glasses to read it. Yep.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to stress one more time, that this is just one little simple progress monitoring assessment, that teachers have formative assessments, we have Alexia assessments, they have unit assessments, they give the whole picture of the child. But this is what we chose to present tonight, DIBELS.
Okay, so we're moving into the Galileo data. In the fall of 2017, students in grades five through 10 took the Fall Galileo Benchmark Test. This is referred to in your, the, the slides that you're going to see, it's referred to as a pre-test, but it's the fall test, so just keep in the back of your mind, the pre-test is the fall test. The winter test is called the CBAS number two. I don't know where Galileo came up with this wording, but pre-test and then CBAS two, okay, fall and winter. As we look through the next set of slides, we're going to show you two different types of graphs. We know you're, you've been looking at bar graphs, but we're going to throw in an extra graph called a scatter plot, and I'm going to attempt to just briefly describe how it works, but we're probably going to focus most of our attention on the bar graphs, as they are correlated to state testing. So the scatter plot will depict student growth and achievement, and the bar graph will depict student performance, okay? So, this is a sample Galileo quadrant. You all have a cheat sheet in front of you, it's a one-page sample, if you need that to kind of refer to, because it is a little heavy data-wise, but what I would like you to know is that the red dotted line, and I believe I have a laser, so this red dotted line, look at that. I know, I've only been here six weeks, but look at this. So I've got the red dotted line is the growth line, so anything to the right of the red line indicates growth. Anything to the left of the red line indicates no growth or low growth. So in this graph, does anybody want to tell me which side looks, what, what is coming out on this graph? Are we having low or high, obviously?
High.
High. So this is a sort of an exemplar of what we want to see in the data, okay? So now there's a green line right here. This green line is your achievement line. Anything above the green line, all across here, anything above that green line, it's all high achievement. And anything below the green line is, basically, it's low achievement. Or basically, they're saying that students didn't meet the cut score that was expected for achievement. You know, if you want to get real technical. So now, this is a quadrant one. This little green, these checks, mean that quadrant one had high growth and high achievement. Quadrant two is showing low growth and high achievement. Quadrant three is showing low growth and low achievement. This is not where you want to be. And then quadrant four is showing high growth, right there, and low achievement. Okay? So that's just a little math explanation, because I'm the math geek in the room. Okay? So we're going to move now to, I'm going to move the microphone over to Michael, and he's going to go over grades five through eight.
Thank you. One thing about Galileo, it's a snapshot. It is like a predictor of how our students will perform on the MCAS, if the assessment was given the day of the test. This is not a progress monitoring tool, it's a benchmark tool. It is, it's a 90-minute assessment that's done on the computer. So it's not something like the DIBELS, which could be administered in a very short period of time. This is given in over 90 minutes, and it's been administered twice. So when you go to grade five, as you can see, towards the right, what we're striving for is meeting and exceeding. That means our students are proficient, okay? And in the blue, we had 15% of our students in the fall were meeting or exceeding the standard in performance. And then unfortunately, it dropped to 7%. So we saw a drop of 8% of improvement in that area. So it's kind of an indication that, based upon the standards that we had, that our students, 7% will be proficient at that time.
So Michael, if I can jump in. These two areas right here, if our students are in the meeting and exceeding area, so you're adding the numbers together, that's where the, yeah, if they're in the meeting and exceeding, that correlates to meeting, exceeding on the MCAS. Thank you.
And then, as you go on to the math section, we saw a slight improvement.
Oh, the math section, sorry.
So we're looking at from 6% to 8%, okay? And that's based upon the benchmark of the fall to the winter one, okay? And again, when you break this down further, I do show you the standards, okay? And it's based upon the standards and the timing. So this is based upon where our kids were in this today, that's where they should have been curriculum-wise. So that's why. So therefore, you need to look at the curriculum, the pacing, the content. So although our students are not being proficient, we have to look at the standards and saying, are they being introduced to the standards as they go on? So towards the end of the year, they're expected to have all the standards. And therefore, the benchmark will be given again. Again, this is a snapshot. This is like, stop the clock, let's give the assessment, whereas a DIBELS is an ongoing assessment. We need more of a progress monitoring tool, that's what we're going to be looking for. And then grade six ELA, we went from 20% to 21%. So they are learning skills, or maintaining. And again, what we need to look at, I also look at, is partially meeting is trying to decrease, you're trying to move the red from left to right. You want to decrease the amount of red from the left and move it to the right. So you always try to, you're hoping that, the goal would be that the red bars would be greater as you move to the right. So again, we saw a very slight increase in ELA. And in the grade six math, we saw a drop from 23 to 13. So therefore, you need to look at the curriculum, you need to look at the standards. Okay, so there was a drop. And in grade seven ELA, we again saw a drop from 22 to 10. So again, I'm just adding those last two columns together, the blue and the red. And then the eighth grade, seventh grade math, we saw an increase of just 1%, okay? We, again, the goal is always to move to the right. You want to get those, the bars on the left to be smaller. So seeing that meeting is 30%, you have to look at instructional piece. You have to look at the content and how it's presented, and making sure that the curriculum is aligned. And then for the eighth grade ELA, we went from 21% to 14%. And then the eighth grade math, we actually saw an increase of 19 to 31. So we saw an increase in the eighth grade mathematics scores. Okay? Again, this is, this is not like the DIBELS, where it's progress monitoring. This is a snapshot. This is, stop what you're doing, let's take the test. And then teachers can look back at the standards and look at the assignments in their curriculum to see if they've hit that standard and how the students performed.
So next, we're going to have Stephen Nolton, principal of Bartlett High School.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Zajac regarding the middle school? So, I understand it's just one snapshot, MCAS is just one snapshot. As an instructional leader, I'm assuming some of these numbers are concerning.
They are concerning, yes.
What are we going to do to try to, it says to me that the kids aren't learning the standards that they're required to learn within a set timeframe. Is that a fair statement?
We have, we are struggling with the scope and sequence. We are.
And can you explain what that means?
Meaning that we are spending time filling in gaps. There are gaps in their learning, especially in the area of mathematics. So teachers are spending time filling gaps, previous gaps, before they can go with the present content. So that is where part of the problem is. The increase in instructional time is helping with that, but we are have, math is so skill-driven. I mean, you know, if you're not fluent in computation of fractions, it's very difficult to move on. So there's a lot of times being spent to fill gaps. The extra instructional time has helped, I will say that. But we're still filling gaps.
What is your confidence level on the actual performance of the instruction being given?
We're looking at that. That's a key, is that, are we really challenging students? We talked about expectations, the DSAC team is coming, we're looking at expectations, we're looking at instruction. Looney Math has come in, and they have, working with the math teachers in terms of how they are, what the student outcomes, what should it look like? Is it simply rote memorization? Is it just an algorithmic approach to solving mathematical problems? Or is it a true understanding of the mathematical concepts? That's an example. So what we found is that a lot of the instruction that we're giving is just algorithmic, solve step one, step two. But it's not, it needs to be more of a higher level, where students are actually comprehending, understand the mathematics at hand, and can attack it in different ways. And that's what we're finding, is that the instruction needs to ramp up. And we're learning those different strategies.
So if you identify gaps, obviously, what is a reasonable timeframe, again, as the instructional leader of the building, to say, at what point should those gaps begin to close? Because obviously, students entering sixth grade, if it's taking them, I'm making it up, two months to review what they should have learned in fifth grade, now you're two months behind, and that clock is ticking throughout the entire year until the date towards the end of the year, when they sit down to take the MCAS. What would be your goal as the principal, to say, okay, in X number of months or X number of years, that gap has to close to what percentage?
Well, we have to realize that gaps will not form in one year.
No, and that's why I'm asking.
And we're not going to, we're not going to close them in one year. I think as we begin to really work on the math curriculum, and as a math teacher by trade, and I've taught math for a number of years, it's going to take, I would say, a few years, because you have to fill in the gaps. The elementary kids, when the math programs are implemented, they'll come up with a strong foundation. You know, the Common Core is a whole nother situation, where they did ramp up the math, and they did ramp it up to the point where one thing we dealt with was, what was being taught in seventh grade was suddenly now being taught in sixth grade. And so there's gaps that are being formed there. So it's going to take, I would, I mean, I want to be, if I could predict, I have seen that, based upon the schedule that we're looking at for next year, the new middle school schedule, the intervention blocks that we're putting in place, the increase in instructional time, and I think really working with the math teachers and their work with Looney Math, I was looking, you know, you're looking at two or three years. Okay, now, what I mean by that is, it's not an indicator, but you need, it's going to take time. It's going to take time. And I think the instructional time is going to help. I think the common assessments, where students are taking common assessments in their grade level, and not, it's not just three times a year. I mean, it's consistent, it's a culture. It will take a few years to change that.
Do you think there's a buy-in amongst the teachers and the staff, that they understand these gaps, and that they're committed? It's going to take a lot of work from everybody, that they're committed to shrinking? Because again, no offense to the new people sitting around this table, but from this side of the table, we've heard about these gaps now for years. And you and I have talked about this privately, and I'm not blaming anybody, but that's where the frustration lies at times. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, the Massachusetts Frameworks were changed in 2011. Well, now in 2018, I understand there was a big acceleration in what was expected, but we're now seven years since those new frameworks were adopted in the state, and these gap numbers don't seem to be closing.
But I think why you can't do his job unless I do my job? Because I have to send these kids ready, you know, and prepared to do the tasks that he's expecting. So right now, they're going, they're backfilling. So I think I'm a chink in his chain, too. So you know what I mean? Like, you can't do that, and that does take time. So we're building a really strong literacy background, we'll be adding math next year, and that does take time. So, right now, these are, because, back to, deficit. So that over people.
And if I can add something, too. Looney Consulting has come in, and I'm fairly new. So they were in here before I started, but what I saw was, they looked at the curriculum alignment. You said, you're right on point. They need to be aligned to the 2017 mathematics curriculum frameworks. And right now, those teachers have made changes, significant changes. So remember, this data was back in January. So I'm hoping to see better data. I mean, because the teachers have committed to, grade six started with a pilot of illustrative math, which was actually written by Bill McCollum, who's one of the authors of the Common Core. And so they're piloting this free online program, because it was a great thing just to do, to try to get the most out of the time we have between now and when we take the MCAS this year. It's not necessarily the choice we're going to make, but it's a great program that they can just jump into, and they're working really hard to do this program. And then seven and eight jumped on board as well. Okay? They were using something different. And now, grade five is using ZERN, which is another free program online that is Engage New York, but it's a compressed version of Engage New York, which should hopefully augment where they're at, so that they can get the most bang for the buck. So there are things that are happening, so that the scores hopefully don't have to end up like this. You know? This is a predictor, but we've made changes already.
I think that's really important to note. In eight months, there's been a considerable amount of work to peel the onion and look deeper at what the scores mean. That isn't just representing the scores to you at a meeting. The administrators are looking at teaching practices, we are providing professional development to our teachers, we're looking at the materials that we actually have right now in each of our classrooms, and saying, if they're not aligned, why are we using them? How are we going to close the gaps? And we do have a plan. And the plan is, we're going to be looking at a cohesive math program. And it does start in the elementary school. And we are piecemealing things this year, and we're certainly presenting data that's not new data. This is a reality snapshot of where we're at. I am hoping to be sitting here next year, with giving you a snapshot and showing you how kids have progressively grown with some of the changes that we are putting into place. I, again, want to go back to the grade one DIBELS. The fact that kids are showing growth in January in grade one is a positive sign that the reading program and the resources that we're putting in place are effective. And I can honestly tell you that, and I wasn't here either, so I don't know what's been done in the past, but we are working diligently as a team to look at student improvement, and look at our instructional practices. And we're working to collect teacher feedback and teacher buy-in. Because the most important thing that we're obligated to do here is teach our kids. And we want them to be successful. And so we've put Lexia at the elementary school, we've hired Looney consultants to come in and work with teachers, and give us a snapshot audit of where we are in math. We just met today with an ELL consultant to take a look at our ELL programming, to look at how our kids are progressing. So there are a lot of little things that are happening here on any given day that the public doesn't see, the teachers may not see, but these guys are tired. And we are working hard. And I want the community to know that none of us really wanted to show this data. But it is important for us to show this data. This is where we stand today. You will see progress.
And one thing we have to, I always look at this coming in, again, it's my fourth district, my third building, is you need to provide a safe, secure environment for students to learn. You can have the best instruction, but if students do not have a safe environment where they feel respected and safe, and they know that they can come into that building and they can learn, focus on learning, you have to establish that. And because you could have the best instruction in the world, but if you don't have high expectations academically, behaviorally, and I think that there's more than one factor, there's many factors that are contributing to the scores. And I think that, of course, you have to look at instruction, you have to. I mean, that's the first thing you look at. But there's other things. There's culture, there's atmosphere, there's expectations, there's an environment of respect, and a belief that students can do it. And that takes time to change. Culture takes time to change. And so, you know, we're going to work on all these things, but every day, we're working on culture, we're working on forming relationships with people, you know? And that's a big role of it. They need to feel comfortable.
Yes.
I wondered about that, in terms of the culture. So when the teachers see this data, are they, you know, as concerned as we are, would you say?
They are, they are concerned. I mean, it's a situation where I like data, I enjoy data, I'm a numbers person, but it's how you present it. And you have to say, this is reality. You can't make up excuses. There are no excuses. We can't, these are children, these are future generations that we're dealing with. But we have to be realistic and accept them for what they are, and then come up with a plan, a determination, and prove. The math teachers are, they're enjoying the consultant, they're working on it, they're learning. They had a demonstration lesson a couple, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, if I'm correct, where they observed the instructor in the classroom, and then came back and debriefed about it. We are looking at instruction, we are looking at that very importantly, but we're also focusing on, as the principal, that I'm also looking at culture, I'm looking at expectations. And I think that's, expectations are for all people, of all members of the school community. And that's a big role, the big response, a part of it. In my experience, it is.
Some positive things are coming out of this. Good, healthy conversations about where we are, and having people say, we don't want to be here, we can do better than this. You know, we have Looney Math who have come in. We looked at our math trajectory, and that's caused us to take a look at the program of studies at the high school, and how we're building math, the math pathways. And we need to change the expectations. And so that doesn't happen overnight. And we're in the process of doing all of those things. So I trust that change is happening. I see it. I see the hard work that we're doing, and this is a baseline. And this is, this is unfortunately where we're at. And I want you to see that, so that next year, you can see that we've made some substantial changes.
We will see an improvement, okay? We will. And that's what the staff feels like, the same, we're working together on it. It will improve, I have no doubt.
Any other questions for the middle school?
Just a remark, I mean, this is an emergency.
I know. I know it is. You know? And we're filling, teachers are spending extra time to fill in gaps, they are using extra instructional time to remediate deficiencies in basic skill areas, okay? That's what we're doing, we're offering the after-school think tank, we have started, you know, you try to offer, we have department nights, where kids are coming for extra help. We have students who are now focusing on grades. We have students who are now focusing on grades. I cannot stress to you the importance of changing a grading system, what change that has made. Because, I mean, they did not, in many ways, they didn't understand what they were being held accountable for. And there was no accountability. Now, when the teachers are talking to kids, now they're coming in and making up assessments. And they are coming in and they are, you know, I had students come to me and say, please move me out of this class with too many of my friends. I wanna focus on my academics. I mean, that's a culture change. And that's something that we change mid-stride. You may not, they have to understand what the expectation is for them to meet the expectation. And now they're beginning to understand the expectation. And they are focused on their grades. And what I'm gonna say to you is, I do not, my feeling was, for some of our students, it was not a priority. It wasn't. And it's hard to say as a principal. But we keep telling them, that's the expectation. You have to do this. And I think that, you know, we changed the report card this year because I felt that there was a need to change it. I would not, I did not plan to change grade report cards halfway through the first trimester. That was not a first-year principal's goal. But I knew that after that short period of time coming on board, I said, this is not going to work. This is just, it's not going to work. Not saying it's a fix. It's not a fix, but it's part of it. Because kids are now, students are now focused on learning, you know? And that's what we talk about, is there education? And teachers are having this conversation with kids. But again, it's a culture change.
I do wanna just remind the school committee that new this year, we put together grade-level coordinators at the middle school. They have teacher leaders, curriculum leaders. We put together grade-level coordinators at the elementary school. And my expectation is that the principals are working with teachers on curriculum issues. And their teacher leadership teams are looking at this data and having a sense of urgency and working together in their common planning times to say, what is going on? Why isn't this working? And we are trying to put the supports around the principals with consultants, with the two curriculum directors that we've just put in place this year, so that people are supported as we move to grow.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
So Stephen, you are up.
Okay. Go to the next slide. Okay, this, the scatter plot on the left. Do you recall what Jill said about, she gave you that little cheat sheet in terms of what the ideal plot would, scatter plot would look like? This one comes pretty close when you see the whole sort of movement up into that quadrant one, where we have, basically, we have combined 81% of our kids meeting or exceeding. With only a, we see so many up in quadrant one, both achievement and growth. We have just a very slight drop-off of about 8% to 73% when they, at the CBAS mid-year test. So this one's pretty good. We have a lot of kids meeting or exceeding. So that's pretty good data right there. It's positive. Then we get into the next one, where you can see that, if you look at the scatter plot, you see that there is, you know, relatively high achievement above the green line, but little growth moving to the right of the red line. And if you look over at the bar graph, you can see that we had 88% of our kids initially meeting and exceeding, but then we had a 10% drop-off. Most notably, when you look at the exceeding group, we dropped 25% out of the exceeding. And as you're gonna see, as we move through the slides, this becomes a pattern that is a concern for us. So we move to the next one. You can see, again, in this particular one, we have, you know, we have a mixed bag here of achievement and growth was sort of dead center there. We have 68% meeting and exceeding initially, and we drop all the way off to 41% at mid-year. And again, most notably, out of the exceeding group, where we drop off like 14%. So again, that holds true to the last one we looked at. And we go to the next one. We again see the same pattern where we are, you know, sort of mid-range as far as achievement and growth. And we had a combined, I was looking at the wrong one. This one was, yeah, this is 68 and then drops off to 41. Actually, I was one slide ahead on the last one. But it's the same pattern through all three slides. Is that we do pretty well initially, and then what happens at the upper level with the exceeding group? They seem to fall off. And I think that goes back, at least my assumption in our discussions, is that, you know, the questions you asked was, well, why is that happening? I would guess it's curriculum-related, as far as the curriculum being aligned to the standards, the content that's being taught, perhaps the quality of instruction. But that's difficult. I mean, we go in and out of classes doing evaluations, and it seems like people are in there. We've done learning walks. Teachers are teaching. They're handing in lesson plans to the administrators every week. We're reviewing them. We're seeing some quality lesson planning. But I think some of the things that come back, especially with the higher groups, is, is the rigor there? Are they being challenged to the extent that possibly they should be? And is the curriculum aligned, which I think reinforces the need for our interaction with Looney Math? Jill has already been in talking to our math teachers. And we're looking at, again, the whole assessment package and realigning the curriculum for both ELA and math.
And we're looking at equity too. With the Program of Studies and the new pathways for math, we're looking at ways for all kids to be able to access math and to do well, all kids. And so there's a huge emphasis on math right now. And so I know right now, the heavier emphasis is at the middle school. And then it's shifting to the high school. It's happening concurrently, but more emphasis on the middle school. And then next year, we're looking to do more work with our consultants at Park Ave. So there's just, as the superintendent said, there is so much going on. But it is exciting, the work that's going on. And we're hoping that some of the things that we're planning to do are going to put us in a different place next year. That's what we need support, being able to do all of the things we need to do.
I have no doubt that the research-based materials that we are going to be getting and putting in the hands of our teachers are going to help. I am holding the principals to high levels of, to be instructional leaders themselves. We're developing curriculum teams at all the schools. We're working with the Department of, the DSAC team. We are, we've gone through each of our buildings. We still have Park Ave to do. We do learning walkthroughs as teams, not to evaluate the teacher, but to evaluate patterns that we're seeing across our district. I would say we're peeling the onion pretty deep. And that may be new here, I'm not sure. But we need to do that, because the data's telling us that the material and curriculum and instruction and assessment program needs an overhaul. And so when I say that the FY 19 budget has been built with curriculum instruction in mind, that's why. That's the priority. That's been our priority. And there is a plan. We're looking at reading at the elementary school. We're looking at math right now at the middle school. Next year, in the turnaround grant for the elementary school, there will be a math review. Ideally, we'd like to have, before next year starts, a math K to six program and a six to 12 program put in place well before next year. So we're trying to get the right support for our teachers. We're trying to, I'm trying to ensure that our principals are in the classrooms to evaluate teaching, to support teachers, to be using data, to inform our practices. And there's so many things that are going on right now with committees and looking at assessment and looking at data. We're trying our best. And this is not the kind of data that anyone wants to present. There is a sense of urgency, but there's also a sense that this is where we're at. This is where we're at, and the only way is up. And we're determined, as a team, to change this.
Any other, Mr. McCarron?
I just would say that I share Herrgert's frustration. Sitting on this committee for years, seeing this kind of data, this is not new, fortunately. However, having said that, I have full trust in your leadership, because I think we're bringing a new set of eyes to something that's clearly not working, probably for a variety of reasons. And so I like, you know, your sense of urgency with the new team to examine all these areas, you know? Clearly, you know, we need to do something, and I agree. We need to know where we're at, we have the baseline. And, you know, like everyone on the committee, I expect, even though I may not be here, I expect, I'll be watching, I expect improvement. Because you expect improvement.
We do. We do.
I look to you. I trust your leadership and your team to just happen.
Any other questions, comments from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
I just wanna say thank you for sharing the data with us.
Great.
Yes?
Similar to our discussion earlier about extracurricular activities, I know I'm totally changing the subject, but going back to that, there was a $50,000 list of things that we had never asked about. So we didn't know that it was a need. And it's clearly really urgent when we looked at the people that were standing here talking about it. And relating that back now to the data, if we didn't ask, and we didn't have this difficult discussion, we wouldn't have an idea of where we need to go. So I definitely see the value in having this discussion and really peeling back the layers. I do view it as urgent. It sounds like everyone else does as well, you know? And I just hope that we can have some alignment when it comes to even the reading curriculum as well, having something, you know, that really captures everybody. So for this year, we're midway through. So there's very little we can do to bring things into alignment, other than planning for next year. And hopefully, having something that will capture, you know, all the grade levels and turn it on its head if we need to.
We are turning things on their head, believe me. I'm keeping people busy. We do have a plan for the reading program. We have a pilot K to five right now. We're looking at six to, I think it's six to 12, Study Sync. We have a group of teachers coming in April 3rd, I think, to look at the continuation of the reading program, so that we have a constant flow. So that's already set up. We have a math committee that Jill's setting up. So these pieces, even if we didn't show you the data, all of these things are happening and would be happening, because this is not acceptable. Our kids can and will do better, and we can make sure of that.
Just, yes, Mr. Chairman?
I just wanted to echo the comments of the rest of the committee. And also to just add that, you know, like Ms. McCarron said, this data is not new. In the past, it's been brought up, kinda felt like we've gotten lip service in the past. I am very appreciative that you brought this information. More appreciative that I can actually see movement, and it's not just lip service. I can see things moving. I see the bags in their eyes, so I know how hard you guys are working. And I greatly appreciate it. And, you know, there's a reason why there's a new elementary school principal, a new middle school principal, a new superintendent. And it's because the data has been the same for so long. And having been pretty much on every committee that's hired you guys, my hope is, and I actually know that you guys are moving in the right direction. So it's very frustrating to see the data again, but it's very enlightening to see you guys moving in the right direction. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And if it doesn't work, we blame you?
No, you were on all those too, so not alone.
I know it's getting late. The only final statement I make, it still amazes me, all these years, when I look at the data, and it's not great. But what I do know, and I've said this numerous times in the past, as Mr. Schenover alerted too early, my wife and I do have a few children, and I've had the privilege of personally knowing hundreds of graduates of our school district over the last six years. And the vast majority of these children, you know, we live in a highly competitive global economy. Ask anybody how difficult it is to get into a state college or university these days. Try getting into the nursing program at Quinn-Sig. In addition to all the private schools that are competing with students across the country and the world, our, the vast majority of our students, by the time they get to that stage in June, are getting into phenomenal schools. They're going to school. They're being able to handle the curriculum that's given to them in college. And now, some of these kids are now graduated college, and I know personally, and are entering the workforce. So I guess, for those that may be watching, although it is frustrating and it is concerning, I still have tremendous faith in the end result. I don't quite know how we get there, and I don't know if the data is wrong or if it's just everybody's awful at standardized testing, but regardless. I, Mr. McCarron is very famous at saying, the best part of being on this committee is attending things like the National Honor Society event and the awards night and the super team dinner and all the things we look forward to in a couple of months, and then ultimately, graduation. So it is concerning, and I know you're all working hard. But I have also seen personally the end product of hundreds of children that are out there succeeding in our community and throughout the country. So thank you very much for your efforts. Moving on, new business item C, reallocation of staffing. Mrs. Gogan.
Yes. I would like to inform the committee that, starting on Monday, the dean of students at the high school will be split between the high school and the middle school. We've had some increased needs at our middle school. And we are going to split the position. We have met as a team, the high school administration and the middle school administration, to reallocate job responsibilities. I want the community and families to know that there are 438 students at the Bartlett High School right now, and there are 603 students at the Webster Middle School. And we believe that this is a good move. I believe personally that there is going to be a lot of wins with this split position, where students and staff are gaining a lot of information from Eric Tracy, who will be going back and forth, on what the expectations are at high school and vice versa. So he'll, he himself will be sharing that good information, and it will make for a smoother transition into high school, whether it's around behaviors or academics. Having someone of Eric Tracy's caliber be able to assist Mr. Zajak and Mr. Kay with dealing with discipline issues over there, I think is, we are in need of that. And then there will be some other benefits.
Any comments or questions from the committee? Again, I know it's getting late. Similar to the conversation we just had for the last 45 minutes, you know, we as a district have spent a tremendous amount of money and resources on trying to deal with social, emotional issues, and I know we're not alone. Ironically, this past Sunday night on 60 Minutes, there was a story about a program in, I think it was Milwaukee. And I don't normally like to read things, but I actually took notes while I was watching it. And they use this new, I don't know if you've ever heard of it. They use this new program called Trauma-Informed Care. And the basis is not what's wrong, not asking what's wrong with that kid or why he or she is behaving that way, but it comes down to what happened to that child. The CDC, and this is very sad, says that one out of eight children have suffered enough trauma to cause long-lasting damage. You don't need to answer this question, because it's getting late. But I know, I guess my concern is, again, similar to the academics, ironically, the first reason I got involved 11 or 12 years ago in the school district was this topic. Because I had children in all three buildings, and I just felt that they were literally out of control. And Dr. Charity at the time, we formed a committee of parents, teachers, administrators. Mr. McCarron was the chair of the committee, of the school committee at the time, and he actually attended several of those meetings. And the programs that we have today, such as Quest and STAR and Journey? Was that what it was called, the old junior high program? It's called Journey? There was another one, but Advocacy. Those programs came out of that committee. So I understand the need, and obviously, I privately have shared with you my opinion of Mr. Tracy, and I think he's a phenomenal guy. Again, I just think, and you probably are doing this, need to look at our programming, and is it working, and do we have the right personnel and everything else that goes into this?
We are. We are.
We are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Yes?
Mr. Chair, so I'm just thinking, and I don't know what your thoughts are in terms of long-term. And I just wonder about, long-term, having a split position and having an administrator split into buildings because they are part of the culture of a school building. So I don't know if there are, would be any detrimental effects of him only being now at Bartlett halftime and at Webster Middle School halftime.
And this is new. And so we have, between now and the end of the year, to really assess it. Mr. Tracy will be spending the mornings over at the Bartlett High School and then going over to the middle school. And certainly, if there's a crisis and he needs to be called to either one of the schools, he's close enough to do it. I have seen split positions like this on the same campus, and they've been very successful. We will assess it as we're going along. I think I've met with my team, and we, we, my main concern is that Mr. Tracy's not doing one and a half jobs. And that the responsibilities are lightened at the high school for him with the two administrators that are there. And certainly, two administrators for 400 kids, they can certainly handle that. And so we are going to assess this as we go. I'm not sure what will happen next year. I want to see what's happening right now. I know there is a clear need for a third person at the middle school. And when you establish a clearer code of conduct, and whether that's trauma-related or behavior-related, and kids understand that there's consequences for their behaviors, and we have systems in place to help the kids who are crying out for help. And when things de-escalate, kids can learn. That's only going to help the high school. So if those, if at the elementary school, they, they, we shared the data with you on what, the Swiss data on the referrals, and that's dramatically decreased since last year. And now we really need to see what's going on at the middle school. And all of these progressive baby steps, hopefully, will help our culture at each of the schools. And we are, Kathy Barris and the team, having conversations about Quest, about Strong, about Journey, about what they're going to look like. Do we have the right staff in, in place? How are the guidance counselors handling kids in crisis? In fact, we just, one of the other things that we, we just almost completed was putting together updated safety protocols for our administrative team, so that we are consistently dealing with our kids across the district in the same, the same way. We're having an attorney come in next week, I think it's next week, to go over regulations with discipline, so that we are informed again. We're establishing, and I'm new, so I don't know what you've done, cleaner, standard operating procedures at all three schools. That makes your organization stronger. And those are the type of things that we're working on. I don't have a crystal ball to see how this is going to work out. I have a good feeling that this is going to, there's going to be a lot of wins from this. And we will have to play it by ear. We certainly want to thank Mr. Tracy for, for being able to do this. We do not want to lose Mr. Tracy, and he knows that. He's a valuable asset to this community, and I think he's going to bring a lot to the middle school.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is submission of town meeting articles. Mrs. Perangeli.
Hi, thank you. So we received notice yesterday afternoon from the town hall that they put out for notice for town meeting articles, which need to be submitted by March 23rd. So typically, we, we have a very short window on where we need to approve. So I was fortunate enough that the meeting was rescheduled, so I could add it because we wouldn't have had another meeting before the submission was due. We are looking to submit one article, just to, you know, over the past few years, we've been updating the grounds here at the high school, repaving the lots and cleaning them up. Now that the renovation area is complete out back, I would like to have, finish up the back circle, the back lot and the admin area, clean up the parking lot, put some lines in and some visitor parking, make it clear for people who are coming in. And also maybe do a little landscaping out in front of the building, so it looks like a nice professional office when you come in. So I'm, I'm looking for approval from the school committee to send down a warrant article. I have Mr. Pozetti coming in. He will give me, as they've done in the past, the town. We pay for material, so he comes in and he'll give us a price for material, and they do all the labor. As far as landscaping, it would just be material. Our guys would do all the labor. So we, we get away really cheap. I'm not expecting it to be a big financial burden on anyone. It would be free cash. I would be looking for, not a borrowing. So with your permission, I'd like to send down a warrant article to repave the back and do a little landscaping.
Any comments or questions from the committee? Hearing non-lawry, would you pull the committee, please? Second? Motion second and third. Any further discussion?
My only comment, I was going to ask you if we're going to do the same deal with the DPW because it's been so much for us.
Yes, they've done a wonderful job, and they really, really, they're team players.
Yeah.
You know, they really are team players with everything that has been going on and busy. But I called up Kenny, I said, this is, what I'd like to do is I'll be there Friday. Yep, not a problem, so, yep.
Any other questions? Hearing non-lawry, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, before we jump to item six, does the committee just need a quick five-minute recess? Or are we good? We're good? Okay. Moving on to item six, review transfer signing of bills, payrolls, and vouchers.
Thank you, team. See you tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you. I sent you where the information. Okay. You don't need your pass. You don't need your pass. I sent you the information. Have a good day tomorrow. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, they'll, they'll call it.
Good looking out.
Have to believe. Did you, oh, did you get my zip?
Good night.
Good. Good night.
Is it really? Top secret, it is.
Book needs to go to Dave and Brian.
All set, yeah? Actually, just, I'll just leave it there. Oh, okay.
I should just review what you sent me, you don't send it all?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, breaking the rules. So the next item on the agenda is to enter into executive session. I will entertain a motion according to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the so, chair so declares. To discuss the case of RCND Inc. versus CTA Construction at All Y, Town of Webster Superior Court, CA number 1785-CV-01053, pursuant to General Law C03A, Section 21A, Subsection A, Subsection 3, Subsection 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DAM, comma, 449 Mass., dot, 444, parentheses, 2007, close parentheses.
So moves.
Second.
For those who are watching, we are going to be entering into executive session assuming the committee votes, and we will only be returning to open session to adjourn the meeting, so we will not be turning the cameras back on. Any further discussion? Hearing non-lawry, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.